Where is everybody?
I'd like to call a meeting tomorrow. It's the regular meeting of October 8th. We'll have, after the call tomorrow, we'll have a roll call. We've got someone's amplified over there somewhere. Have you got it taken care of? We'll do the roll call and then if everyone will join in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Hathaway?
Present.
Palmer, absent. Flintoft, present. Brzeo, absent. Carrie?
Present.
Noel, present. Riser?
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Please join the Pledge of Allegiance. Next is adoption of the agenda. There's a couple of changes. There's a request to move items H5 and H6 to new business. And to add another item to the consent agenda, there's no objection. That is the supplement for UTEC item, which was distributed to the members of the board.
I'm sorry, what was the last one?
The item is entitled Supplement for UTEC.
Christie's got a copy here for the public.
That would be added to consent is item H10.
And we're going to pull.
H5 and H6 need to be modified slightly, so their solution was to move them from consent to new business and make the modifications.
Is it now the time to, we're going to have Murphy Harrington here on the tree fund policy. Would now be the time to move that up?
If you were, if someone wanted to make changes to the agenda, this is the time.
So I would like to move the tree fund policy up.
We've got staff here for everything except K2.
Yeah, I think people are going to be waiting no matter what.
Then can we move it up to at least two in front of K2? I wouldn't have her staff and I know she's.
Yeah, I didn't propose this order.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm just.
Alright, so.
I'd like to, I would like to move K3 up to the first item in new business. That would be my motion.
Okay, so K3 to the top of new business is your proposal?
My proposal.
It's just, you know.
But we also have G N Culbertson.
We've got Aurora, we've got Chris, we've got Brandon.
Okay.
Should be a short meeting.
Okay, I would like to remove H7 from consent, please.
H7. Okay, so you'd like to put that on new business as well?
Can I ask, having an introduction, you know how we sometimes do introductions at the beginning? You know how, sometimes.
Who would you like to be introduced?
Well, I'm just wondering if having David Crockett introduce himself at the beginning like we've sometimes done, would that address your concern to not pull it, or you still want to pull it?
No, I still want to pull it. Is he here?
Alright, he's here. No, I don't think he's here.
He's not here?
Let's have David Crockett here. So you don't want to introduce him?
I don't, I thought he was here.
If he's present, he may be participating remotely. I don't know.
It's okay, we just need to pull it.
I'm struck by that.
Okay, so we're moving, so the proposal is to move H5, H6, and H7 to new business.
At the end?
And at the end, and then to move K3 to the top of new business.
Right.
And to add H10 to the consent agenda. Are there any other changes to the agenda?
I would support that second if you need to.
So move by riser, support by.
And Will?
Carrie? All in favor of approving the agenda as modified, say aye.
Aye.
Oss. Sorry.
That's okay.
Alright, communications to the Board of Trustees.
Yes, in the packet, and I added a couple this morning because they had come in. We've got some communications about the tragic death accident on Dexter and Arbor Road and what we might give it to do about increasing the pedestrian safety. And the second topic was in regards to the Trailwoods HOA request of the township.
So these were added to the packet recently?
Yeah, so they're on.
Alright, that brings us to introductions and recognition. And unfortunately, Treasurer Palmer is not present, but we have a possible action honoring her. So this would be a recognition. The, the item is item E1. And if it's okay, I will, it's not a very long resolution, I will read it and then we can discuss and take action. So the operative language is whereas Donna Palmer has faithfully served the people of Syo Township as treasurer since 1987. And whereas during her tenure, Donna Palmer has collected over $2,000,000 in tax revenue. And whereas Donna Palmer has attended more than 900 meetings of the Board of Trustees and participated in numerous momentous votes, including the formation of the Syo Township Fire Department, the creation of its water and sewer districts, and the transformation of Jackson Road by the addition of the boulevard. And whereas Donna Palmer has spent countless hours meeting with taxpayers and talking with them on the phone to resolve their tax process questions. And whereas throughout the years, Donna has been a voice for fiscal responsibility and prudent use of public funds. And whereas Donna Palmer has always been a friendly and supportive colleague, writing stories about each other's children and grandchildren, and in her case, great grandchildren. Because as Donna says, quote, "Family comes first," unquote. Now, therefore be it resolved that Syo Township residents, visitors, and businesses thank Donna Palmer for her years of dedicated service and be it further resolved that we all hope for a long and enjoyable retirement for Donna Palmer. So the motion is to adopt that resolution honoring Donna Palmer after 37 years of service as Syo Township's treasurer.
Could I make a suggestion that we repeat this when she's actually here?
Well, the idea is to have it approved tonight so that we could actually present it to her at her event on October 17th.
Okay.
To which everyone is invited, it's a public event.
It just feels a little strange for that being.
We can, we can read it again.
I think that would be.
I think that's a great idea. I mean, I'm okay passing it so that we can get whatever printed, printed, but then just read it again at the next meeting.
Sure, we'll do a reprise. Hopefully she'll be feeling better by then. So I would make the motion if there's, was there a second? I can't remember. No? So support by Noel. All those in favors, or is this a resolution?
Yeah, let's do a roll call. Yep. For our Rules of Order, first up tonight is Carrie. Carrie?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Riser?
Yes.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Flintoft, yes. Resolution adopted, 5-0.
Thank you. Alright, that brings us to public comment. This is the time for members of the public to speak for up to three minutes on any matter under the purview of the Board of Trustees. If you would like to speak and you are present in the hall, please come to the table, sit down, and you'll have your three minutes. And then once we have given a turn to everyone who's present, we will turn to those who are participating remotely. And trustee Riser, will you serve as our timekeeper, please? Is there anyone present who would like to speak during public comment?
Good evening, Kathleen Brandt. I want to talk about policies and procedures. I was really hoping that you would remove from the consent agenda not only H7, but also H8. This board voted unanimously to have a policy to post committee and commission openings. And I think it was something like 60 days in advance. This totally disregards that policy. Plus, it's earlier than the expiration. And one final thing, only trustees can nominate. And this was a nomination from the parks director. Nothing against the candidate, the parks director, but at what point do you follow unanimous policy decisions? Because there are people in this community that are well, well qualified, but have no idea that openings are available. And I believe they can contribute so much to the township. There's a little, unfortunately, inbreeding here that it's just word of mouth. And that's not fair to the residents because I think there will be genuine interest. Also, I want to commend the utility director for his report. It's amazing to see in one place all the things that are, have been accomplished or are in place. And then I want to also talk about re-roofing the township own barn. I give credit to Judy Monk for doing some research on this. I concur that this property has value to the township. There's often a comment that there's no access. That's absolutely not correct. If you've been there or look at Google Street View, there is two access points. One right off of Wagner where the group has put up a gate, so it's very accessible. Also accessible on Syo Church, they put in curbs there, but there could be a curb cut in there. As a one acre property, it has great potential. On occasion, people talk about a farmer's market. It could be used as part of parks. Electricity can be added there, floors can be added there. These are not insurmountable things. If we took that in perpetuity, I think we should honor that. To, let's not rush to judgment that it's already on the chopping block. Thanks so much.
Good evening, trustees. Judy Monk. I have a couple of things. One, I also want to compliment Brandon for the report. There was one question I had on it, and I see he's going to be on the agenda. So I'd like him to address, there was one that was brand new to me to see that it says that the utility team has spent a lot of time keeping developers in line and not illegally turning on water. That was like a new concept to me. So I'm hoping Brandon can address that when he has the time. The second one is, I want to shout out to everyone who had any participation or action relative to the sustainability fair that was this weekend. It was excellent. So whoever contributed to that and made it a success, I want to compliment them. And then my third item is the re-roofing. I'm hoping that you did receive the email that I sent. It was late last night. But I'll tell you why it was not earlier is because I had to make some calls out, do some checking on things, and I wanted the responses back before I sent uninformed comments to you. So I just want to, for the record and other people who did not receive it, is just give you a snippet of a couple of my points. Is that as a resident, I see this 1930s barn as a Syo treasure, which has tremendous upside potential. It's a landmark building that enhances the heritage and character of our township. That being stated, I do not support the motion to re-roof the barn at this time. I'm asking for it to have either been removed from the agenda or to postpone any action on it. And I give a number of my considerations behind that in the email. But in summary, good governance dictates fiscal responsibility, transparency, and maximization of value and benefits for Syo's residents. Therefore, as keepers of the public trust, I earnestly ask the Board of Trustees to imagine the opportunity and the attractive potential of this property and barn. With no emergent need, we have the time to make an informed decision. And therefore, I'm asking for postponement or removing it from the agenda, which has not been done. So postponing any action on that. Thank you. Thank you.
That's the Syo Township resident. Thank you Planner Krebs for the Carlisle-Wardman report in tonight's agenda packet. It looks like the Goodrich Theater developer has decided to go with two buildings, four stories each, with 270 units in their submission, and that will be coming before the planning commission soon. Crossroads got away with all of $90,000 to the fire department for their three-story condos. For a project that will require the use of a ladder truck in an emergency, I hope future township officials will take in, will make sure that developers contribute significantly to the fire department's fund to buy a ladder truck rather than the joke that happened with the crossroads at the last board meeting. And tonight's item, K3. In the Tree Policy Rational and Implementation Guidelines document, Parks Director Harrington suggests a reforestation program for the West Syo Reserve. That program will run to about $500,000 over three years. I fully support the reforestation efforts, but would like to offer some suggestions. This project will consume all of what we have in the tree fund in one project. I would like to see the tree fund used all over the township using half inch to one inch diameter saplings is proposed at $20 each. The US Forestry Service plants millions of smaller saplings each year. Could we use smaller saplings at a much better price for this project? That would expand our ability to fund this project while still being able to plant trees in other areas, too. The cost would be that it would take two to four years longer for those saplings to mature. Lastly, trustee Brzeo. At the last board meeting, opening public comments, I asked this board to remove you because you refused to attend and you refused to resign. You were late to the meeting, so you didn't hear those comments. After midnight, I left home to attend the board meeting in person so I could repeat those comments to you face to face. You left the board meeting early to avoid having to listen to residents. The fact that you were absent from the board for meetings for two months, for over two months, then arrived late, left early, and only appeared so that the supervisor could have the majority he needed to shove through a ridiculous development project at Crossroads shows you have no business representing residents on this board. You displayed absolute cowardice, leaving the board meeting early so you didn't have to hear from residents after you were the deciding vote on the supervisor's scheme to help a developer at the cost of residents. At least the rest of the board came back after closed session to spend five extra minutes for closing public comments. You didn't. This is now the third time I make this request. Will someone, anyone on this board, please bring forward a motion to remove trustee Brzeo from the board for failing to do his duty? Please make that motion tonight so that we can have an elected trustee appointed to this seat for the last few weeks of the term. Trustee Brzeo has proven to me he doesn't have the ethical standards we require for our inner representatives. I will note trustee Brzeo is yet again absent tonight. Please do something. Thank you.
Is there anyone else present who would like to speak?
Evening, Renee Klubek, resident. I just wanted to take a minute to say thank you. Oftentimes, I bring different things that are conflicting and difficult to talk about. And tonight, I'd like to say thank you. Two weeks ago, when I was here, I mentioned that once again, the Klubek family had a ridiculous problem with the new priority waste and brought it to the attention of the board, brought it to the attention of Will. And within eight business days, I'd like to thank, Will reached out to me right away and said he had added Sam to the information. He was originally from GFL, transferred over. But I'd really like to thank Kristy Aiken, who did all the legwork along with Pam Friedman from Priority. And even when Kristy was out of work, she made sure that I was getting the communication. And it has been resolved, and it was resolved actually much quicker than anything we had with GFL. So I just thought the board should know that maybe there's a little bit of a positive hope moving forward with Priority. And secondly, we, even though we don't use their services, want the board to know that their employees have been much more receptive to problem servicing people, even when there's been a problem with a day late or something. So I'm hoping we're on the right track. And I believe Kristy is doing a great job of coordinating many different things, and I want to say thank you personally. Thank you.
Thank you, Renee.
Good evening, everyone. Ryan April. I will echo what a lot of people have said about some of the other issues. I definitely think we should follow our policies when it comes to recruitment of positions on committees. We should make sure people in the community are aware so we can recruit from not just people we happen to know or might be our next door neighbor, but we can recruit people that are new, might have really good ideas. Certainly, some of the people have been in committees for years, have good ideas, but sometimes fresh perspective is helpful. Ultimately, one of the other things that's come up is we really need to focus on what we're doing with following all of our policies. You know, last week, two weeks ago's meeting where we went to 1:00 in the morning, and I realized that there was a lot of people here waiting. It just wasn't conducive to getting much done, especially near the end of the meeting where, while there was a lot of good discussion, I think a lot of people were understandably tired and a little bit frustrated and kind of confused. After talking for five hours, I'm sure just about anybody would be. So appreciate if you guys can follow all the policies you've set up for yourselves. This will make your better decision making. Thanks.
Thank you, Ryan.
Anyone else present who would like to speak during public comment? If not, then let's turn to those participating remotely.
Are you interested in speaking? About 11 people here, maybe about eight members of the public. Jonathan, you're up. Hi, Jonathan.
Hey, everyone. How you doing? Just wanted to, you know, don't want to denigrate anyone. I heard we had the sustainability fair. I'm just hoping that next year, we can at least get to sustainability good, maybe even great. Thanks, everyone. Have a great night.
Thank you, Jonathan.
I'll ask you. Your time's up.
Thanks for being here. No other members of the public.
Alright, thank you.
One response?
Oh, yes, please.
I just wanted to respond on the, the Goodrich item. We can talk about this at reports if that's more appropriate. But I was glad to see that there's a pre-application meeting. In that PUD, we put requirements for affordable housing into it. So I will just note that it's a much differently structured PUD than the Crossroads. And then a question for our township attorney. I'm asking you, you don't have to answer it now. My understanding is that the board doesn't have the power to remove a trustee, even if the board appointed them. My question to you is, does the board have the power to remove trustee Brzeo? That's the question. And would you be so kind to prepare a written answer to the board?
Yes.
Prior to October 22nd?
Yep.
Thank you.
That's our next meeting.
Thank you, Mariah.
I could respond to something, Jessica.
Sure.
You were talking about the Goodrich Theater proposal. As I understand it, the capacity that they're proposing doesn't require the affordable housing had been.
Oh, did they propose to come in just under?
Yes.
Yes. Oh, sweet.
Yeah, they're not, they're not, they're not going for the density, the height, that would trigger the affordable housing.
Okay. I'd like to be in the pre-op meeting on that, Kathy. Okay, would you consider that with Laura?
We'll talk about it.
Thank you.
Alright, let's move on. We have, next item is approval of the minutes. We had minutes from a regular meeting of September 24th, the draft minutes. Are there any corrections to the minutes? If none, is someone prepared to move approval of the minutes as proposed?
I would move their approval.
Alright, move by riser, support by Noel. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oss, minutes are approved. Brings us to the consent agenda. Remind people, items H5, H6, and H7 have been moved from the consent agenda. And item H10, the UTEC supplement, has been added. Is someone prepared to move the consent agenda?
I would move the consent agenda.
Move by riser, support, or by Noel. All those, wait, I'm sorry, we need to have a roll call.
Carrie? Yes. Noel?
Yes.
Riser?
Yes.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Flintoft? Yes. Consent agenda adopted, 5-0.
Alright, that brings us to. Someone's still unmuted. So that brings us to reports. We have regular written reports. Are there any comments on the regular written reports? Any questions? Sure, go for it.
Yep, I just wanted to thank Rebecca for preparing the monthly financials. I'd also note that, you know, we've submitted our audit and the report on time. We will be preparing a corrective action plan. And I'll share that out. I worked with Donna on her parts, and we'll share it with the board. We'll get that submitted by October 31st. And we may have to take action at our next meeting on a deficit elimination plan. We, you don't, there was no real deficit in any fund. And so Plant Moran is actually debating this technical point with the state right now to see if we actually have to submit one. So no deficit to worry about, but one.
You still have to submit a plan to the state even if you don't have a deficit?
We're arguing with them. So we have a deficit in the Townshipwide Road Special Assessment Fund with the funding that was coming in, so it was going to be resolved. So in terms of, I'd have to pull up the definition, so forgive me, I'm not prepared to go into it right now. But in terms of not a, not a deficit of any concern as there would be, say, if there was a deficit in the general fund, something that doesn't have deferred revenue coming in. So we'll bring that to the next meeting regardless whether we have to submit the plan or not. And I also want to let people know we're having the public accuracy test on Thursday at 10. You're welcome to come here or watch online if you want to be a part of it. That is something we do prior to every election to demonstrate that the programming at the tabulators is done properly. That is something we do prior to every election to demonstrate that the programming at the tabulators is done properly and that they can properly count and tabulate every type of ballot. I want to thank everybody who's requested their absentee ballot. We've sent out six thousand five hundred and forty ballots, including twelve to our military voters, one hundred and thirty-nine overseas. We've already gotten twenty percent back, which is great. We have fifteen thousand six hundred voters. Three of them have already used our second ballot drop box we were required to install. I want to thank Sio Foods for letting us use that place. We check it every day. And again, you know, in twenty twenty, we had eighty percent, seventy-nine percent turnout. Expecting at least the same, so we'll have well over twelve thousand voters, maybe thirteen thousand voters, so. And if anybody has any questions, call Township Hall. People are getting texts saying, hey, you know, this doesn't make sense. Who's sending these texts? It looks like it's from the Secretary of State, but it's not. Anything confusing, phone calls. Had a voter call me today about a concerning person approaching them with a clipboard, saying I'm from Sio Township with the Kamala Harris campaign. I want to know how you're voting. I told her to report that to the police. All of these things we want to know about. So any little thing or big thing that seems amiss, please call Township Hall and check it out. Thank you.
And the questions for the regular written reports. I know we received a planning commission report kind of late because planning commission met last night. All right, well, so let's move on then, if we can, to our utility director report. Brandon, thank you for, I'll also add my thanks for your thorough written report.
Oh, thank you. I just, I do need to share my.
Yeah, they just click on the screen and it's sure. Now, to your mood.
Awesome. So first, I'd just like to start off with my general report, and I do know that there's a question about the water theft issue. But I was just, I could have, any questions from the board first?
Question about the water theft issue.
No problem. Yeah, so just from my history of working in this field as a laborer in the city of Flint, water theft was a, a big issue, not with just developers, but with everyday residents. So when I got here, I knew that there was a lot of development going on, so I advised my team at any chance they got, when they were free of regular work, to always visit the job sites, look and see how the water main installation's going in different steps, and then to pay attention to what was happening with the water. And so I did have two field techs. And on a given day, find four different developers that were doing a combination. Each developer was a little bit different, but one was.
What are their names?
Okay, I can do that. Cranbrook, Lombardo Homes, Wexford, and Douglas Company. So Wexford illegally turned the water on, illegally made an illegal connection to the water line, and then had illegally was using the water. Lombardo Homes, they just had the water on illegally. No proof that they actually stole any water, but still, I told them multiple times not to turn the water on, that that's a Sio Township job. The third one was on Oriole Court by Cranbrook. They had four houses on illegally. All four, we had, they, they were using the water, and two of them, they had illegal connections to the water line. So basically, they were hooking up a garden hose without using a backfill prevention device. And then Douglas Company, this was their second time receiving a fine. This time it was illegally turned on. The water usage that I know of the previous time was illegally turned on, and they weren't using the water. So I did work with multiple people, Christie, Mariah, to figure out what was best to try to resolve the issue. I think we got a good understanding with the developers now that it won't be tolerated, so hopefully, we don't have any more of this going on. Every dollar that's, every, every drop of water that's taken out of the system that doesn't get metered, the residents paid for through water loss in the rate study. So I take it very serious, and, and the guys in the field did as well, and that's why we're able to find it.
Another question, and I want to thank you for, for the written report. The Metron meters. You state that you have six hundred and thirty meters installed, that we approved four hundred thousand. Where are we at with that? And do you, do we need to authorize more money for more meters?
Well, right now, I think I just got done ordering one more thirty, thirty more one inch meters. I think that leaves us roughly twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars left. However, that puts us with, I think our recent count was three hundred and sixty-five, three quarter inch meters on hand. We'll have like thirty-five one inch meters on hand. I think we have thirty-something inch and a half, and then eight two inch meters. We have slowed down putting in meters currently, just because we have the other two main projects going on, the potholing and the sewer. Cleaning and TV work is about to start. I anticipate that this will be enough to get us to April. I can always slow down putting in the residential meters. The goal was seven hundred and fifty a year, which would get us to the thirty-three hundred something meters that we have in our system. And that would evenly spread out that four hundred thousand dollars a year. So we are well on our way to meet that goal. We'll pass it this year before April comes. So I feel like we'll be all right with meters. We just gotta, I gotta make sure I pay attention to how many they're putting in. Because once they get going on them, they, they really start putting them in, so it doesn't take long.
Should we be moving faster? Like, do we need to authorize more? I don't want you to slow down work because there's.
Right, it's possible. I just, we gotta see how the next few months goes. And if I, if I get close, I can get with Christie and Jillian and let, and let them know that, you know, if you guys are willing to, we could order some more meters and keep doing it.
And remember, the subscription begins when you're shipped, so you can't have them sitting on the shelf.
Yeah, it's trying to spy with badges.
Balance, right.
How many are in so far?
I think we're right around six hundred and thirty-five. When I got here, I think we had about sixty-eight in the system, if I remember right. And we only really started installing them in April, a little after April. So we had a majority of them in within like three to four months.
Is there any lag time between ordering and getting them?
There was this last time, so I think I overheard it with Lassa. The three quarter inch meters are the plastic body ones. And there was a delay in getting, I think, the plastic moldings for the three quarter inch. So this last time, we waited, I want to say maybe a little over a month for this new order of three quarter inch. Previously, before that, they were coming in within two weeks. The brass meters come in within two weeks typically, so.
Given what trustee Carrie just shared about the box sort of starting as soon as you have them as an inventory, but you also don't want to be sort of waiting to.
Yes.
Is there a way to sort of?
It's just a delicate balance. I make rich, well, ask rich, to keep the count as much as possible, to keep an eye on it. And then we also take the meters out of our main inventory and set them aside for the developers that have already prepaid for them. So like, what do you commons, all their meters already set aside. Whenever they need them, they have them. So we try to stay on top of it like that. And then whenever we get low on a certain size meter, we just, we just stop putting them in unless we absolutely have to. It's, you know, meter's not reading somewhere because MXU failed, or whatever it may be, we just really halt and, and get a new, new batch order.
Thank you for your excellent report.
Yeah, great report, great photos.
Couple of things, the water debt fee that we have on our bill, when is that? We've been paying for a long time, it seems like. When is that finished?
Um, I, I do remember asking that to Plant Moran, and they did answer it at the time, but that was quite some time ago. I can get with Plant Moran and maybe even Rebecca. We probably have that.
Maybe even. Two and three ish years. It's not long.
Okay, because I know there's other things down the road. You talked about capital improvement plans and others, so. Having a double debt. Another question. Oh, how often is the pump station visited?
Daily.
Okay, good, because in your report, it's, you said that you have a fence, but not cameras yet. That was a little concerning. I mean, the fence is good. Hopefully, it keeps people out. Okay, so daily. And the meter study, we've been, in trustee risers, planning commission report, I believe it was in there. They're recommending OHM in the map or whatever we want to call it. And is that something that we need to bring? I think we need to.
It seems like a utility and board issue.
Yeah, but in your report, you said within six years. I don't think we can wait for six years.
We have the committee starting to do work on our EUs. Now, I mean, we've met a couple of times. You were at last.
Well, this, yeah, but this is for the, for OHM to.
Yes.
Yes, this is what.
We met at OHM's office.
Yeah, it was, right. But in his report, he said six years, so that's where it was a little confusing.
So we've started to do some work on it. It's only preliminary work. Several other meetings, for sure. OHM was compiling information.
Okay.
So the actual meter study for the sewers, I think Matt and I were speaking that we perhaps want to start it next year. I forgot exactly where in the capital improvement plan that we set that. You know, we, we kind of put it in the area where we thought it was best. We can revisit that timeline during the, in, in December, or whenever you would like to, Jillian, and we can, we can pinpoint where we want that to be. But it's something that for sure is already budgeted for in that rate study that we had done.
Forget about it.
Planned for, not budgeted for.
Yes.
There's a lot going on. I just want to make sure that we keep that in mind, because somebody brought up about the theater and the two hundred and seventy units and other things that are going on, so. Yeah, we're going to be eating them up fast.
I just want to say that the water tower looks fantastic.
Thanks, I'm glad it turned out good.
This is great. I have a question, but I won't, too much time. Regarding the water line identification, I've seen the trucks out there, vacuum trucks, and seen the crews. And how many have you got? It looks like it's going well in the field, but I don't know. Are, are people not home? Are they not letting you in it? Are we going to make our number? And how much lead will be found, if any?
No lead was found. I don't anticipate we'll find any. I think the crews are averaging anywhere between ten to fourteen-ish lines per day, which is what they told me that they would average. So that's going good. We do have three hundred and sixty-eight houses we have to identify. The original list that was provided from OHM, the random three hundred and sixty-eight houses, we had to modify quite a bit. I had a lot of overtime work for the guys to get started on that list right away, so we didn't slow down the project once the pipeline got here. Most of the reason why we changed addresses were due to curb boxes being in driveways, and we wanted to stay away from that. So we had the, all the curb box found already ahead of time. We changed the addresses if need be. We, I, I say as a whole, the residents, the residents in the community are responding fairly well. We still do have some interior identifications that need to be done, and some residents are not responding.
What does that mean? You gotta go inside to take a look?
Yes, right, right where the meter is, right where the water service line comes out, we have to verify it in there as well. And so mostly, it's just been door knocking and leaving hangers. Now, we're to the point where we'll be starting to make phone calls and see if we can get their attention that way and get in there. So.
We've got eight days to get it, we think?
Yeah, we're absolutely not going to complete the CDSMI on time. I did already send a letter to Eagle to explain the situation and that we are committed to completing it on, completing it as fast as we can.
Do we give them at least what we found to date?
We are required to. So every day for, now that I found that out yesterday, like two days ago, I have been looking at twenty-seven hundred addresses on the Excel spreadsheet, filling in everything that I possibly can with the work that we've done so far.
Then we'll transmit that to them as it goes on, or on that date?
On October sixteenth, I'll submit it. And then as soon as we get all the potholing done, if I can make the appropriate assumptions, which I have been able to so far, I will submit it with it fully being completed. And, and just wait to hear back from them.
Can you send the board a copy of that?
What's the count for that? Sorry, you know what the count is to date?
Yeah, yes, I can tell you exactly how many. You can see this wonderful spreadsheet. I'll pop it right up here. If it will load. There we go. I have a lot of things on my screen that's covering the top, but right here, I don't know if you can see this. It's, it's, we got two thousand one hundred and sixty-three that I'm fairly confident fit in the category of non-lead, or we know that it's for sure copper or plastic. Two thousand one hundred and sixty-three out of the roughly, well, it's not rough, I can tell you. We, at this point, when we started this, we have a few new service lines that were put in that are post this, this thing being done. So we have two thousand six hundred and fifty-two service lines when we started to do this information. After we submit this and we're fully done, every five years, I'll have to update this with all the new service addresses and submit it.
We have to do three hundred and sixty-eight for Eagle. What's our year to date? I mean, how many have we got so far of the three sixty-eight?
Oh, I'm sorry. You know, I don't have an exact count of that. I've just been adding them to this Excel spreadsheet every single day when Zach comes in and hands me the list.
Yeah, I saw that today. Yeah.
I feel like we started this last Monday, and so if they just average ten, ten, thirty, forty, fifty, sixty, we're probably around over sixty service lines that they'd identified so far through potholing.
Started potholing last Monday?
Correct.
That's the vacuum truck that goes right in front of the curb box and sucks the dirt out. You take a picture. You showed me the picture.
Yep, all that gets captured in our dashboard, just so that we have that information as well.
And, and I, I know that a lot of communities are missing this deadline. I know at Lassa, they're buttoning it up pretty quickly, getting it in. Can you talk to me a little bit, though, about kind of what our, what our plan was? Did it be planned to meet the deadline? And, you know, what changed? Why are we missing the deadline? I got to ask.
Yeah, so originally, when I got here, I was hoping that we could get things around fast enough to meet the deadline. Originally, when I got here, from what I knew, the deadline was January, or before January of twenty twenty-five. It wasn't very long, and from what I got here.
All the records, I remember that.
Yep, the federal standard changed what the Michigan standard was, so then we, they changed it to October sixteenth, that all this information had to be done. We had absolutely no time internally to do this work. So, yeah, we got with OHM to review every single record that we could. That significant, significantly helped lower the amount that we had identifying the field. So shorted up the amount of time that it was going to take to do that. But just with getting the contract approved and get to the point where the guys get, get out there and actually start doing the field work, and just with the way the things progressed, we just didn't have enough time. There's probably a chance that we never were going to meet the deadline, even though I hope to. However, you know, given the fact that we could have started this in twenty twenty, and I realize there's a lot of things happening, a lot of changeover, the fact that we got, I got here about the same time last year, actually, this, I think, was my starting date, to get this far that quickly, I think we did a really well, you know, a really, really good job as a, as a, as a board and, and utility team. I mean, that's a significant amount of work and, and background stuff that happens, has to happen to get there. So I know, as I told my team today, you know, I'm very proud of the amount of work that they're getting done, how quickly we're getting it done. So it's just unfortunate. I, I do feel like there could be some kind of, more or less, there's probably going to be an Eagle violation that we'll receive. However, again, we've already sent a letter letting them know that we're going to complete this before the end. Um, however, again, we've already sent a letter letting them know that we're gonna complete this before the end of the year. Um, I really feel like. Shortly after November, very beginning of December, I'll have the full, the full CDSMI ready to go. Um, and that we should be fully compliant at that time.
That's great. Just keep us apprised.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So what I really wanna, uh, another thing I really want to show you is all the apps, uh, that we got for GSI, G I S, I'm sorry. Uh, that the board approved for the utility department. These are very, very helpful tools. Uh, the first one I want to show you is the water meter dashboard. I just want to let you know that, um, every dashboard that we have has a field map. That goes with it, so it's not just this. The field map is what the field techs use. To input the, the, um, information. All the dashboards is more or less what I look at to see the information, make sure it's right. Uh, do some asset management for it, see how well they're performing in the field, just stuff like that. So, um. Right here, we have how many meters that we have currently in the system. Um, or houses that we went to, rather, so we went to four hundred and twelve houses. Some of those meters, some of the houses have two meters. Um, so that's why we're up to six hundred and thirty. Um, you know, one's the domestic, one's the sprinkler. Um, this overlay right here is. All the green dots are exactly where those new meters are at. You can zoom in here. To any given meter. This is a new Woodview Commons and I can click on. Um. How fast it's gonna load. And look up important information, who put the meter in, what the meter ID number is. What material it is. We got pictures of the meter. Material. And that is standard for every single, um, place that we get into. Um, in progress. Um, I had them turn everything to in progress that is being potholed. So, this is. The random list that was generated. Uh, through Excel, and these are all the addresses that we have to go to. And pothole, as John mentioned. Uh, I let, um, Zach. Um, Cole decide where to start. He's been doing all this background work. Al- along with the other team, but he's been the main. Person to oversee this project. I'm gonna let him coordinate where the, where all the pothole needs to go, so it can go as fast as possible. That's where we're working. Yeah, um, the incomplete, so what we started with was. I don't know, around maybe a thousand addresses, all from cycle one. Most of cycle one is the Upland District is where we want to focus. So these are all the ones that are still incomplete. Um. But we're working on it. Um, when you compare it to that one, you know, we're, we're all over there. We're working hard on it.
I, I'll call you offline, but if you need help getting metal winds or ravines or anything, I can. Have the HOA, uh, Management Association send. I don't take up your time now, but. I'll, I'll call you maybe tomorrow to see if there's something we can do locally to help you get in those houses.
Yeah, most, uh, for this meter replacement program is going really good. A lot, a lot of residents are calling in, creating appointments. Um, when they're doing Saturday work, they're getting a fair amount or anytime on overtime, so. Again, I mean, we're really replacing a lot of meters. Um. I'll try to go quickly, but another important tool is the sanitary jetting slash TV dashboard. Um, we don't have any real data populated right now, just because it hasn't started. But, uh, as soon as they do, um. The contractor themselves are gonna be the ones inputting the data. Uh, Ray Hawkins is gonna be out there. Um, also watching the contractor perform the work and double check the footage. Or the footage and the amount of feet that they jet in TV, that's how we pay them, is by foot. Um, so he will wheel off just to ensure the distance are accurate, but. Um, if you click on a section, the section is from one manhole to the next manhole and they're all divided up in, in those sections. And we'll get to see the progress in real time, um. Um, when they complete a section and any information that is performed. Down the road, I hope to get the actual video attached to this section. So I can just watch the video for any section that I want to see, instead of having to search for it. Um. These. Uh, water valve exercising, Eagle really recommends us to exercise our water main valves. Um, as much as we can, um, so that is something that we. We previously were doing here, uh, before I got here. So, we created, we asked for this, uh, list to be created, so I can see exactly what's going on. Um, it tells me exactly which one's complete. I can look at it, get all the information of who did it. Um. So that's more or less showing me what ones they went to. Uh. The valve maintenance dashboard, so that was the valve exercising, the valve maintenance. Uh, gives me detailed information and on the ones that they went to that need some sort of maintenance, and I can click on there. And, uh. It, it will basically tell me what's wrong with it, what do we need to do to fix it. Um, and, you know, that's how we maintain records instead of having a paper copy that may end up getting lost. Uh, I'm trying to go fairly quickly. Uh, another one that's gonna be important. Twenty, thirty, forty years down the road, but it's important for us to start tracking now is our water main breaks. Um. Down the road, it'll be able to tell us, uh, you know, what section of water mains we should really look into replacing due to the amount of breaks. The most recent one that, um, everybody just heard about, um, was the water main break for the cinemas. Um. You know, I can, it, you know, eight-inch water main, it was a hole. Um, we do have pictures that I need to attach to it. Um, we just got these like. A week and a half, two weeks ago, so I'm really trying to put as much data in there as I can. Uh, but it'll eventually, it'll give us a good idea of where our problem areas are. Uh. And then one more that I will share is our hydrant flushing map. So before the guys would just print off a big map. And put it in the utilities room and highlight the different hydrants that they went to and they would tape them off. Um. This right here is a visual display of all of our hydrants in the system. And these ones in yellow are the progress that we've met so far. We have a hundred and nineteen flushed at this point. We started. Uh. I think last Thursday, hydrant flushing. Um, and the same thing here, there's another app that tracks all the maintenance that needs to be done. Uh.
Brendan?
Yep.
Hundred and nineteen out of seven eighty-eight, that right?
Correct. That's what OHM believes we have. Um, the thing with this app is. So, I can zoom in right here. These ones right here are Ann Harbers, so we gotta remove those. Um, I just gotta get. I'm the only one that can go in there and delete them. This hydrant is Ann Harbers, and then if we have other hydrants that are in the system. Um, obviously, these ones aren't ours in here. Um.
There are more hydrants.
Well, there is, but we don't maintain those ones. Cause the hydrants are after our meters. That's the only private system that we have in SIO.
It's SIO Farm.
It, it has in their water, um, their water mains and service lines, they maintain them. But, uh, so if we're missing any hydrant, they can add it in there and then I can get with OHM and get it actually added into our overall field map. I guess that will be the one last thing I can show you, cause I don't think many people have seen that. So, A, OHM has maintained this for quite some time. And the field techs never had access to it, and that was one of the apps that they helped us get as well. So this has all of our assets, um, water sewer related, not our, not our outbuildings. Um, but all of our assets on here, um, with. All the information that we have compiled at this part, uh, at this time, mainly OHM compiled. And you can click on any section. Of the sewer, any section of the water. And it can provide details of the date that it was installed, the type of material it is. Uh, like this section right here on Jackson Road is clay, is eight inch in diameter. Um, and different things like that, so, um, it really helps us when we're going out there for a water main break or anything like that. Um. It tells us where the valves are. These circles right here. Um, is a valve. So, we can figure out, um, really quickly, how, you know, how many valves it is to shut down a certain area with the general idea of where they're at. Um, and doing the valve maintenance, um, valve turning program is really helping, cause now we're getting our eyes on every single one. If they're below grade, we're raising them, um. And we're making sure they work. Um, so, um, a lot of good things, uh, have developed from the board approving this and. And getting access to this, and it's, it's significantly gonna help throughout the years, um, to have it, so.
I just want to know how efficient your team has been and how, how much work you all have been doing. You've been doing a great job managing them. I'm glad that, you know, the, the additional tools make a lot of sense. Um. One question, not for now, but for later, and maybe it's more for the fire chief, I would be curious. Because I know for years when he got here, he said, hey, we need to maintain. Our hydrants more consistently, so I'd be curious with a little bit more time from his perspective. Where we're at from kind of, uh. Safety's point of view, like, when, when we meet the standards for having all of the fire hydrants properly maintained.
Yeah, um, I know for sure, once we get through them all this year, we'll have a whole log of what needs to be maintained. And I'll make sure they get done, but I did talk.
Kind of our baseline?
Yeah, um. Cause we didn't really have any outstanding work orders. When I got here, we had. Three hydrants that were out of service. And I got with Rich and they quickly went out there and fixed whatever was broke with them. Um, but, uh, I did talk to fire chief about this, uh, hydrant maintenance app. Um, so that if he wanted access to it, um, I was more willing to, you know, give him the credentials that he needed to, just. Just so that he could have it, um. And he could overview what was going on in the field daily with the ma- you know, with the, the conditions of certain hydrants. Um, he just told me that, uh, he would get, um, Brandon, the assistant chief. Over, he can look at it, and if it's something that he feels is appropriate, then, then. Then we can, you know, then we can set him up with it, but anytime we have something that's broke, that's a hydrant, we do let, um, chief know right away. Um, that way, they know not to use it. If there's a fire in the field in that area, they know to automatically pick a different one, so it's quicker for them.
Thank you.
No problem.
Thank you very much, Chris.
Hey, that brings us to. Unfinished business, um, and we have, uh, one item that's the. Uh, re-roofing of the township-owned barn at South Wagon and South Church Road. There's some discussion of this since our last meeting, um, we've sort of gone back and forth, but, um. Chris, if you want to come up, um. Do you want to come up? Maybe you don't want to come up.
I'll start the three minutes.
Um, so, it, it's been, uh, I think we, what we determined was that, uh, it was a little confusing, the directions that, um, emerged. Or that we left from the last meeting with, and, um, then we got some sort of, uh, uh, different guidance, uh, from the township attorney. Um, when we were, uh, talking about this, and so, um, we sort of. Went back and forth in terms of how to approach this, and then, um, we got, uh, further feedback when we put this on the agenda. So, um, I don't know if you want to sort of try and summarize that or, uh, share anything that you've learned, um, since last meeting.
I think you did a pretty good job of explaining how we got to this point. Um, you know, I, I did talk to Steve, who was one of the contractors, the roofing contractors recently. Um, you know, just to clarify some of the, the issues that came up. You know, it just depends on our, then the township's priorities as far as re-roofing that, that barn. Were there residents? Absolutely, you should have done it yesterday. Um, talking to him about a possible metal roof on the barn. But there's a lot of contingencies with putting a metal roof on the existing structure. He would recommend actually peeling off the, the, uh, kind of the boards there on top of the roof. He wouldn't just put. A, a metal roof on top structurally, but you can do that by code. He wouldn't recommend it, so there's a lot of different options to go as far as re-roofing that barn.
And then, um. There's also this, uh, suggestion, or, or proposal that we either. Um, instead of re-roofing the barn, um, bid, uh, go through a bidding process, not a bidding process from contractors, but a bidding process from potential buyers. Um, to see sort of what the level of interest is and, uh, whether there is an option, uh. For selling as-is without replacing the roof and, um, and having the, the, that, um. Responsibility go to the new owner. And then there's also the suggestion that we just postpone consideration of this, so there's a lot of different ways that the board could go. I know, um. In, with regard to the option of putting it out to bid, um, that, um, township attorney had. Some information to share about that option. Maybe this would be a good time to hear that as well.
Yeah, so this morning we discussed doing it as a for-sale-by-owner. Um, you know, uh, just doing it a little more low-key than hiring, uh, a, a Realtor and marketing it. I think that, um, we, we can easily do that by letting public know that we're interested in selling the property. I would suggest setting sort of a minimum bid and then having a time period in which people could submit bids. For the, or proposals for purchasing the property, um, as far as the, um. Purchase agreement and taking title work and all of those things, that's something that we can just handle with a title company. So we, we wouldn't need to engage a Realtor for that. Um, in, in, uh. I guess from my perspective, the biggest question is, do you want to sell or do you want to keep? You know, that, that's really what it comes down to. And then if you're going to sell, are you selling as-is or are you making some improvements and then adding that out to the cost, um, of someone purchasing?
There was one other question that, um, I was reminded when I looked at the minutes, um, we were going to pursue. Um, the, not going through a historic district process, but also get, uh, the idea of this other alternative historic designation.
Yeah, it's a preservation easement, essentially, and I did look at it. I don't know if you had a chance to look at that also. It, um. There are some qualifications that the property would have to meet, and I didn't spend. Enough time looking at it to find out whether or not the barn qualifies, so that would be another question, right? If you're going to sell it, is that going to be a requirement that the, that the barn stay?
Yeah, that's correct.
We, we did talk this morning about maybe a time period where we sold the barn to someone and we said. You know, we, it's, uh, we would like you to keep it for at least X number of years. They wouldn't necessarily be. Deed restricted to that, but, um, you know. Hopefully, we still live in a world where you can handshake that kind of thing with someone and they'll. Will adhere to it, so.
But probably, I think, and you alluded to this, um. The surest way that the township, if, if it is important to the township, um, to have the barn remain a barn. Um. Uh, would be to. Retain ownership of it and continue to lease it out, but potentially, or, um, use it for some purpose as, as the township. Um, that way we wouldn't have to go through any kind of historic designation, because we would. Be in control of the property.
Correct. Yeah.
Um. And before we go to board members, do, do you have anything to add, Chris?
I've covered it.
All right, um, uh, clerk, please talk.
Sure, um. Thank you, um, Chris and Mariah and Will for your work on this. Um, I, I just want to note in our last meeting, um, we never talked about re-roofing. Um, so I just wanna. Just bring us, bring us back to where we were at the board meeting, as documented on page eleven and twelve of our minutes. We discussed, um, different ideas. Um. And. You know, uh, the minutes reflect the consensus of the board leaning toward maintaining the barn's agricultural and historical value while considering options like selling it with a preservation easement. Board members decided to gather more information on the preservation easement option before proceeding. The board delegated further investigation of the preservation easement and options for selling to. Um, staff. No formal action was taken. So, I'm just kind of reflecting, and I know I was, you know, in, you know, the attorney meeting and heard these things, but. All of that happened after our board meeting. Where we last left it, it was sort of a discussion of, yes, the barn has some value. We want to preserve it. Um, we hadn't talked at all about doing the roof. Um. So, I just wanted to kind of reel us back to where we were two weeks ago.
Sure, uh, trustee, no.
Yeah, I had a few questions about your memo, your report here, so. Um, you state that. Since the September twenty-fourth board meeting, it was determined the barn roof is deteriorating. At such a fast rate. That the township should replace the roof immediately. And seek to renew the expense subsequently. Um, who determined this?
Well, I think we had some internal discussions and I will take responsibility for, you know, dealing with getting bids from the contractors again to ask them about it. I may have interjected that you got a hole in a roof, I assume it needs to be repaired.
I'm a little confused. You're gonna have to go back a few steps.
I'm a little confused, you're gonna have to go back a few steps.
Like, maybe I can add something to help answer your question. So, because, uh, Chris, uh, now reports directly to me, so the two of us were trying to figure out how to carry forward, kind of somewhat confusing direction that we had from the board. We didn't have the minutes at the time that we were doing this, so we were sort of working from our memory and our notes from the meeting. Um, and, um, there were, there was this question about improvements, um, you know, sort of, uh, do, do they happen before or after the sale? Um, and, um, the conversation with, uh, that Chris had with, I think, Lee Hollander, is that right?
Friends of Sciobarn.
Friends, that sort of representative from the Friends of Sciobarn, um, emphasized the, the feeling that tho- those folks who've been taking care of the barn have that, uh, the situation was deteriorated, their, the roof was, uh, deteriorating rapidly, and that they were concerned that, uh, delaying, uh, for the process of putting it on, out in market was going to cause some kind of a catastrophe. Uh, since then, we've gotten other input, um, actually even from, um, the roofing contractor that, uh, you know, they, that there's other opinions, I guess, or other professional opinions, that, that's not so much the case. So, um, we were, but at the time we were operating with this sense that, oh, well, maybe we should do in some ways what, some of the things that we did with, uh, Sci- uh, the West Liberty Farm Property, make some improvements to it and then just sort of roll them into the sale price of the property when you sell it.
So what I hear you saying is that it has not been determined that the barn roof is deteriorating at such a rapid rate. That was maybe someone's opinion, but it hasn't been determined.
Well, I guess it's a passive voice. Um, you know, we, talking about it, talking with the people who have been maintaining the barn for the township for the past fifteen years, that's the position that we were at when we were, um, working on this agenda item. And since then, we've gotten additional information that sort of calls that assessment into question.
So, sorry, if I, if I may, just, there is the, there is the part of that conversation dealt with the idea that the board wanted to preserve the barn, so, yes, so-
That's where I thought we left it.
But, but part of, part of preserving the barn would be if there was an urgency in getting it re-roofed because not roofing it would cause so much damage that it wouldn't be preserved. So it's a multi-layered conversation.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that, 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 that part of it came up like, uh-oh, is leaving a hole in the roof gonna cause so much damage to the barn that there would be nothing left to preserve after the board said that they were interested in preserving?
When did we discover the hole in the roof?
Well, we've known that there's a, we've known that there's a hole in the roof for quite a while.
So at our last meeting, we knew there was a hole in the roof.
Yes, months.
Yeah, that's what I, I mean-
For months.
Okay, but, um, at that time, knowing there was a hole in the roof, we never talked about re-roofing at the last meeting.
Uh, yes, that's correct.
So I guess, uh, we should be starting-
We talked about it, I don't think we decided it, I think the discussion came up, didn't it?
No, not at all.
About it, we, months ago.
Yeah.
Not at all.
Yeah.
It's, it's been, it's been part of the ongoing conversation. It wasn't a focus of the last meeting. It became more of a focus after that meeting. But I think even though the, this is written as if it's a proposal to re-roof, to re-roof the barn first and then turn to selling it, I think at this point, it's just an open discussion.
Yeah, agreed.
Can I get called after her?
My turn.
Yeah, trustee Carrie and then trustee Ryze.
Thank you. Chris, um, did you look into the preservation program? Uh, you just mentioned it's a-
I am in contact with them now. I've got, they, they've sent me some literature, I need to contact them with that. There is a fee to go through the, to put a historic preservation easement on it. I think there's additional fees to it also, but I also received that information recently, so I'll have to give them a call to go through the process, and if we want to make an application, we could make an application.
Okay, because that's what the board had agreed upon, to look into that at the last meeting. And as far as a, a hole in the roof, we can just put a tarp over that. It's not hard to do. Um, and we did not talk about roofing last time. I was actually surprised that it was on here. And one other thing is, um, I don't recall reading the lease agreement with Scioprints, uh, the, uh, barn, Friends of the Barn or whatever it is. Um, does anybody have that?
Yeah.
It was attached to an earlier meeting.
I can share it with you.
From a couple, okay, because I would like to read that again.
At the office.
Um, yeah, because maintenance, if that, if they haven't been paying any rent and they were supposed to maintain, then part of the maintenance would have to, to do a roof, to make sure the roof. We know twenty years, they've been maintaining it for twenty years, money set aside, but, you know, that's besides the point. I, I was just surprised to see this because I thought, from what I remembered, was to figure out if we're going to sell it, and if we are going to sell it, then we want to make sure it's preserved. Or if we keep it, it will be preserved. And we didn't talk about anything else. So as a board, even though there's people that are under, you are under the supervisor, the utility department is under me, I can't tell the utility department to do something that the board has not agreed upon. Just want to make, make that clear to everybody.
But that's why we're bringing it as a question to the board. Trustee Ryzer.
For the record, nothing's under me. Um, the question I have, uh, for you, Mariah, is do we own this? Be simple, do we own this unencumbered without any easements or conditions? So we, how, how do we hold it, i- if you know?
I believe that we do.
Okay, so it wasn't procured with, um, LPC money or some sort of grant money such that we were restricted as to what we could do, correct?
It, it was gifted.
That's right, that's, that's right.
It's the obligation that I have.
Yeah, and I, I've got it up on BSNA, and, you know, they had to put a value on it. They, you know, the value isn't much, not that that's the market value, but-
They would.
Pardon?
They would put the value on it.
Yeah, right, right, but I, we, we, as required, there's a, there is a TCV listed on, but, you know, um, so the question I have is, with the easement program that, that Chris and you were mentioning, is that something we have to do? I mean, what's the advantage of going through somebody else's easement program? Do they help us with money, do they help us with the wording? What's the advantage of the township of doing that way rather than just encumbering it with conditions if we, if we alienate the property?
It's the structure that would be covered under the preservation easement. So the, the, the deed restrictions that we can put on the property would not cover the structure. It would be the use of the property, but not you must keep this barn in a certain condition. So that's what the preservation easement is for.
And the, and the other thing that you shared in the meeting was that there's no guarantee of, that an application for the preservation easement would succeed because you have to meet their criteria and we may not, or the barn may not.
Right, and, and I didn't, I didn't spend enough time to determine that. I was hoping that Chris and I could have some time to look at it.
Yeah.
Well, shall we, shall we just postpone this then? This was suggested.
Yeah, I just, I just want to say too, but Mariah, earlier you, you kind of looking forward, like, kind of posed, like, I think the right question is, is, you know, what do we want to do with the barn? I definitely, I mean, one, we definitely need more information on the preservation easement, you know, see what times needed. Um, I appreciate, uh, Judy and Kathleen giving their input. Um, my number one, like, priority for this barn, for any property that the township holds is that we make sure we're maximizing its public purpose. So I, um, have been concerned about that, and that's why I kept raising the barn and saying, hey, is there something we can do with parks? Can utilities use it? Um, because it, it is just a drain. So, you know, I, I certainly, if there's, you know, interest and, and value in preserving the barn, then, then, and there's a public purpose that we can really define and justify there, that's great. If there's a way to use the barn, um, you know, for, for the township, by the township, where we would keep it and really use it to, for some real public purpose, I would support that. Um, but I just think the status quo that we have here is just, we, we cannot, you know, we, we've got to resolve this um, somehow, so that we're either owning it and using it for a real public purpose. Currently, I do not think it is enough of a public purpose or any. In fact, in fact, I think there's private gain being made from this. Um, we could sell it and have the public purpose met with funding. So, you know, I don't have a strong opinion on it, I just want to make sure that we're doing right by our residents a little better than we have been with this.
I just want to ask, like, theoretically, is there a public purpose in having a barn of that character at that location that, that residents enjoy having there? I'm not, without respect or without regard to go what's inside it, but is having a barn in that, in that location something that the public benefits from and appreciates? And I, I'm not, I'm not saying yes or no, I'm just posing that question.
I think, I think that would be a, a determination, um, you know, for the governing body with input from residents. Um, you know, I, I don't know, I think there'd be an argument to be made for that and an argument to be made against that.
I mean, I-
It really depends on how residents regard it.
Even if we were to use it for utilities inside?
We, we can't, it's not practical.
It's a subjective determination, you know? Different people would place a different value on it. And in my opinion, there is value to preserving it, and I would like to preserve it.
Well, I, I think, to the degree that we have any kind of measure of the township residents' views on this, it's the, uh, renewal of the land preservation village, which is a tax, um, to help in part to preserve the rural nature of Sciop Township. And I think the barn contributes to the rural nature of Sciop Township. It's a landmark right at the kind of southern entrance to the township. Um, and I think partly it hasn't come up in the past because there really isn't much of a drain, uh, uh, on the township from having this, this barn, because it's been cared for by this group. Uh, we haven't had to, as a township, invest a lot of township funds in it.
I, I disagree.
If I could just finish, uh, the, the point that, uh, the reason that this has come up is because this maintenance cost was significantly higher than any of the maintenance costs that, uh, Friends of the Barn have incurred so far. And they came to the township and they approached us and said, well, the barn, the roof needs to be replaced or repaired or whatever. And it's, it costs more than we're, you know, than we've been sort of willing to pay. And then we've been in this kind of loop, talking about it and talking about whether it has value, whether there's other purposes, you know, to what degree of it, uh, having a landmark is important. The sense I had coming from our last meeting on, on the twenty-fourth was that the, there was kind of consensus among the board members that there is some intrinsic value, some subjective value to having that as a landmark. Whether it's worth the cost of replacing the roof is another question. And I, I think we do need to gather more information. I think the suggestion from, um, trustee-elect, um, I don't know if that's the right term, um, Monk, um, that we postpone this and gi- and give ourselves that time to gather more information, given that the, uh, that there are wa- ways of addressing a hole in the roof, besides replacing the roof, I think that's a good way to go.
But to trustee Carrie's point, are there things we can do to shore it up?
Yes.
Even temporarily, so that it doesn't interior, continue to deteriorate or degrade or whatever?
It seems like that would be the prudent thing to do, especially if the folks who are storing stuff there are concerned about the exposure that their stuff being stored there has, as a result of the hole in the roof. I think that's, you know, we could put that on them if we choose, or we could say, as a township, we would like to be the ones to cover up the hole in the roof. Um, that should be a relatively low-cost item, even though we probably would have to, um, hire equipment to get up there.
Chris, I'm sorry, um, did anybody take a picture of the hole?
I'm not sure, I, I know I haven't. I don't know if Brandon and utilities-
It's not a hole.
I, I think it's a hole, but Brandon?
So we, we just have a couple pictures, I think one was from Sheriff Goslin. We're showing that there's, uh, the shingles are completely missing and it's just bare wood. Um, showing, I think, uh, if I say her name wrong, Jan, is it Jan? Then Judy, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I think, I think you are right, I think it's a few areas that are, uh, possibly leaking. Um, either a, a small tarp that kind of looks maybe bad, uh, we could, uh, get a, a piece of plywood, uh, in a couple of different places and screw it down temporarily just to cover up those areas. And, um, if the shingles are weak in that area, it will cover them up from the wind, um, until the board gives a decision made. Um, and then, and as you said, it could be either us or the friends of, uh, of the barn to do it. Um, it, it doesn't matter, uh, utilities, um, it, it ain't gonna take long for utilities to do it. But if they're maintaining the barn, um, you know, I would, I'd recommend them going up there and just covering them up for the time being.
Well, then, so it seems like there's a, a, a near-term solution to both the problem of the deteriorating roof and, um, to this issue. If we just give ourselves a little bit more time, we can gather the information about a potential preservation easement, whether that's a viable option or not.
Or, or also if we want to keep it and what-
Yeah. Want to keep it.
Yeah, and I, I would just like to say for the record though, on the idea that there's no cost to this, just, just three quick things. I mean, there's first the opportunity cost of what we could be doing with it if it weren't just sitting there, or selling it for money, that's a public purpose. Um, the second is the actual expenditures, we pay a little bit more for insurance to cover this every single year. It's not a huge amount, but we do pay that. Um, and the third is, is really just, this is one of those kind of like seventy-nine, seventy West Liberty, the Sciop Flyers, this barn, there are a few of these assorted kind of, you know, um, agreements that sort of fell into our laps with like people we knew, people who had the opportunity. Um, and so it's just, it's not fair. It's just not fair to give, um, benefit to one group, one tenant, one, whomever it is, without having had, you know, open competition around it. So I would just say that, that for me is, is really what, what gives some urgency to this or the next board, you know, resolving this.
So is there a motion to postpone consideration of this item?
Shall we state clearly what we're postponing consideration of?
We're postponing consideration of repairing, of replacing the roof, I think. And, um, the intent is to allow more time to investigate, um, potential options to either sell with or without a preservation easement or keep as an asset and potentially, and if that were the case, look at different uses, potential different uses of the property. Is, does that sum up a sort of everything that we just talked about?
I personally would make it really simple and say you're postponing any decision on the barn.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would too.
Oh, we don't have to take any action, right? Or we just move on to the next thing?
Yeah, it would be nice to come back with some, some next steps. It sounds like we'll get more information on a preservation easement. I'm not clear on who's putting on the tarp. Um, I, it's clear to me that, that the Friends would have put on the tarp had they felt comfortable going up there. There are certain things that are beyond their, you know, comfort level and their lease, so I would just, you know, ask that township. Um, Brandon, if that's something your team can comfortably do?
Yeah, I can, uh, we, we certainly have a letter that's telling them to get up there.
Okay.
Um, we will ask if anybody's comfortable with to do it. Um, I mean, there's always a ball hazard risk, it's pretty high up there.
I'll, I'll work with Brandon and look at some-
But-
Okay, thank you.
Okay, yeah.
No, but I'll make sure, I'm sure they shouldn't be getting up there.
Julian and I.
They gotta make it safe.
Thank you, Christie.
I was gonna say, Christie, that really is going above and beyond, literally.
I don't think so, not that.
All right, well, I guess that is a good point, we don't have to take action, we can just move on to the next agenda item with the understanding that-
Thank you, Chris.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you, Chris.
Okay, so that moves us on to, oops. That moves us on to item key three, I believe. Uh, we moved that to the top of new business.
Oh.
So that's the, the treatment policy, um, and I believe Jan Culbertson is going to join.
Yeah, yeah.
Murphy?
Oh, yeah. But I thought Christie was going in between what, and this too. But I thought Christie was going in between what industry?
Now, we, the motion that we approved, I believe, was John's original motion, which was to move it to the top of new business. So, Murphy, you and Jan are on. And Jan, it just needs to be promoted, I think, probably. Turn it over to you to introduce, but if you want, whenever you're ready to defer to Jan to talk about the background, that's fine.
I think Jan would probably, I didn't know she was going to be here virtually. But if she wanted to potentially even begin explaining, unless you want me to do that?
That's fine. I think Jan has been working on this the longest. And so, and it started out with your predecessor, Anna Cone, and former trustee Jacqueline Corto, who happens to be an expert on forests.
Yeah, thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah. And speak softly then. So, yeah, we had a a small group that included Anna Cone and Jackie, who is a forest ecologist. And we looked at the tree fund policy. And what we wanted to do was create, obviously, the policy is relatively simple. It basically says that the Parks Director is responsible for developing a plan with an appropriate consultant to to spend these funds. And the policy creates a priority of the investment of these funds. And that priority is based on, if you go into sort of the rationale for the policy, that, and and this is a a really significant research piece of ecosystem services provided by different investments in in reforestation, planting trees in different environments. And if you look at the matrix, and the matrix is the basis of how we came up with the priority for the tree fund is reforestation provides, I I just have to say way more benefit than any sort of planting a tree here and there, etc. Because when you do reforestation, especially adjacent to forests, there are just multiple ecosystem benefits that you get from that. So the, so we have the policy itself. And then the prioritization of how those funds are spent and who is in charge. And then sort of this matrix of defining where the best investment is. And because of the research that was done in the West Scio Preserve, the concept is to move forward with the first project, which would be reforestation of fallow farmlands in that preserve. It's been well researched. It has some unique ecosystem benefits. And the idea would be to start small, develop a process and evaluate the first section of reforestation and then go from there. So that's sort of an introduction to the whole. And Murphy, go ahead and, you know, add on to that, if you will.
So to backtrack a little bit, I'm not sure if this is how we want to move forward, but I I think that there was a recommendation to break up this agenda item into two separate model motions. Is that something that I should talk about?
Policy itself and then whether to move forward with West Scio allocation?
Yes. And so for the the second motion about moving forward with the West Scio Preserve project, going off of what Jan said, this this property, the West Scio Preserve and Liberty Pine Nature Area, were both part of a a nature inventory study that was done in twenty twenty one. So the floristic quality specifically of West Scio Preserve has been well established. And within West Scio Preserve exists two somewhat rare ecosystems. And if you were to look at the at the management plan itself, you'd see that within West Scio Preserve exists the Southern Hardwood Swamp and the Dry Music Forest Southern Swamp, which are both ranked S three by Michigan Natural Inventories, Michigan Natural Features Inventory, which are considered both uncommon and rare within the state. So focusing on this park specifically is of high value and a good place to start our pilot project because reforestation of this agricultural land would mean continuation of these two specifically rare and traditionally, what's the word I'm looking for, traditionally sensitive ecosystems, particularly to agriculture. So going back and taking these spaces that were used for agriculture and reverting them into what they were in the eighteen hundreds would be a huge step forward for this entire park. And would offer great benefits both to the people in the surrounding area, but also to the flora and fauna. I could go on about that forever. But but, yeah, it is, it's a, this is a great, this is a great project, and I think a really, a really good use of the tree fund policy money.
Wasn't the idea tonight, rather than to prove it as a project, but it was to do a budget amendment to sort of put the funds in place so that you could then come back with a more specific like quote from a contractor or something?
Yes, yes. And so I did look more into the way that it's, it was broken down in the original proposal. And that that some, Jan and I haven't had a time, a chance to to discuss it, but the amount of money that is allocated for the West Scio Preserve sort of over that three year period is quite a bit higher than what I was was estimating. And and going off of a concern that Rob brought up is that using, I think that we really should start small if possible, since this is our pilot project and using smaller sized trees might, we will have the ability to manage those better and potentially have a higher return overall. So the 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 cost total that I'm looking at proposing is million pitches.
Yeah. And Murphy, well, you're talking about that, too, is we are in a unique position because there are a lot of matching funds as well as foundations and so forth, that if we promote this project and apply for some grant funding, it's it's very reasonable to think that not just this project, but that the whole fund that we have, we could get a fifty percent match.
Yeah.
Relatively easily.
And one of the grants that I'll be applying for by the end of the month is a grant fund that would match up to four thousand dollars, which if if we're able to move forward this fall or next spring, that money has to be used by, I believe, like June of twenty twenty five. So it would come at the perfect time to start us like with our pilot project for any unforeseen costs that that aren't accounted for in in the money that I was going to put into the the model motion. Which the the sum that I'm looking at is for the first year pilot project would be twenty nine thousand five hundred.
Whole project or that would be our share of the project?
That would be, so this, the the project itself, the whole reforestation of West Scio Preserve is going to take years. So we can't, we can't start it all at once. And so what I'm looking at is more of a one and a half to two acres at a time. That way, we can focus more energy on maintaining smaller plots at a time. And there is some controversy, not controversy, but there is differing opinions on what is the best way to start a reforestation project. Some people, if it's ten to twelve acres, like the the area we're looking at, they say throw it all in at once because otherwise you get these like differing ages of forest at a time. And there is definitely value to that that concept. But in terms of what we're looking at, and the fact is, we are using, we need to make sure that the money is, we're getting the most money, most bang for our buck. So the idea of starting smaller and and having this sort of mismatched age forest, I, over time, these small periods of these small gaps in terms of, you know, forest time are really, are really nothing. Other people would argue differently, but I mean, that's just kind of, that's kind of science. Everyone has a little bit of a differing opinion on how that goes.
That makes sense, though, to start small and then especially through younger trees. And eventually, they're gonna end up growing up be the same.
Yeah.
And and with how much can you handle all at once?
Exactly.
Yeah. And you can always change, you you know, the the idea is to start it and evaluate it, and it evolves over over time. And this is, and I I just have to say, this is an investment in generations to come. And it, I'm I'm just thrilled to be, to have this kind of funding to do this work is absolutely awesome.
It is really, it is really unique, the position that we're put in because of this, because, you know, there is this large push right now to implement pollinator habitat. So a lot of prairies, but but the the pre settlement vegetation maps of this area are very much hardwood. And so the having the opportunity to redo a reforestation project is is pretty rare. So we're we're kind of trailblazing a little bit in that aspect.
I just wanted to take the topics one by one, if we could.
So you're ready to make the motions?
No.
Oh.
I wanted to talk first about the policy. Sorry, I just wanted to go through. Thank you for the presentation. I just wanted to go through the policy. Great policy. I'm so excited for us to start strategically spending this money. Thank you, Jan, Jackie, Herbie, Mariah, for your work on this. Regarding the policy, I first want to define what the policy is. I think it's three pages and does not include the rationale, correct?
It's like two.
Oh, okay, just the two pages, sorry. Excuse me.
Two pages and and the accompanying rationale is?
I'm considering the accompanying rationale not part of the policy.
Right.
Do we all agree?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay. Second, and and I didn't, I'm sorry, I didn't think about this before, Jan, when we met a few months ago with my edits. I had a minor suggested edit for consideration, page two, tree fund use. It says that the director shall be responsible for developing and implementing a multi-year tree fund management plan with the assistance of a forest ecologist or other qualified consultant and township staff. One, something that occurred to me is that that makes it sound like we must use the assistance of a forest ecologist or other qualified consultant. I wonder if we might soften that language to say the director shall be responsible for developing the plan, comma, and may be assisted by a forest ecologist, etc. And then the other suggested edit. And just because we've been talking about kind of the plan for the capital planning and budgeting for next year, the plan shall be updated annually. I don't know if we need to include it in here, but I would think it should be in concert with the capital improvement plan. So when we're talking about all of our community assets that we're doing this tree fund management plan, too. So suggested edit would be updated annually in concert with the capital improvement plan.
In conjunction or concert?
Yeah, I guess, I guess concurrent with. With.
Or in conjunction with? Would that be okay?
Sure.
Junction, junction.
Just so that we're doing it kind of at the same time, looking at kind of like the six year funding plan.
CIP?
That would mean the first plan, and, you know, we understand it would be abbreviated. We'll be doing that process in December. Those are my suggested edits for the policy.
So the first one was after tree fund management plan in the second line on the second page to put a comma, process out with and the assistance of.
Yeah, maybe assisted by a forest ecologist. Any thoughts? Those edits?
No, I think those are good. Just to clarify, she she makes recommendations, she comes up with a plan, but expenditures are are board actions?
Yeah, nothing has changed about appropriations and expenditures, yeah.
Yeah, references in later in that paragraph.
But what I like about the policy is it sets the expectation that, you know, the annual budgeting process will always include the tree fund.
And is is it State of Michigan? Is it DNR or is it Eagle? DNR part of Eagle or is it Eagle, all Eagle now?
Oh, I think it's DNR for tree for tree programs. It's probably DNR.
Yeah.
Oops. Are you muted, Jan?
DNR is is still a part of that. And you have actually the grants.
Okay. Were there other comments or questions from members of the board before we move on to? Maybe we can do the motion on this item and then turn to the other.
I would move the adoption of the policy as amended on the floor.
I would second that. So moved by Riser, supported by Hathaway. Shall we take a roll call vote?
Carrie? Yes. Noel?
Yes.
Riser?
Yes.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Flintoff, yes. Policy adopted, five oh.
Okay. And now the other part of it, you were ready to put some comments on that.
Yeah, no, I think that this, the implementation guidelines are are great, and I think we will refer to these. They do seem to include, the last couple of pages seem to kind of go into that kind of first year proposal. And so I wonder if, Murphy, if it might make sense for you to kind of take your your current research as well as the budget and timeline section and kind of, you know, come back to a future meeting or you know, kind of authorization of of whatever that's gonna be. If I understand you right, the twenty nine thousand five hundred, you're estimating that's how much budget you would need through March thirty one for the rest of this fiscal year? Okay. So I'd be happy to make a motion to appropriate up to thirty thousand dollars from the fund balance of tree fund to thirty two for the purpose of reforesting the West Scio Preserve.
I would second that. And do we need to give her permission or allow her to apply for grants, or could she just do that? And to allow the application of any necessary grants as part of it?
Yeah, so all all approval to to apply for grants comes to the board, but we could discuss that after we handle this motion.
Okay. Well, you don't want to combine it with this motion.
Okay.
So so moved by Flintoff, support by Riser. I think we need a roll call vote for that.
Carrie?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Riser?
Yes.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Flintoff, yes. Motion adopted, five zero. To John's question about grants, we've had the draft grants policy, and again, recommended by Maynor, will hopefully get that adopted. But what our working protocol has been is all, you know, even if the grant isn't fully prepared, at least the motion that the board is aware of what funding source we're going for and for what purpose, so that we approve going for it. And then when it comes in, we accept the money. And I can help you with that offline at any time.
Do we need a board resolution to to authorize authorize her to go out and seek those grants?
Is that happening right now?
It sounded like you were preparing.
I wasn't aware, yes. And I, there was a DTE matching grant that I was applying for that's due October twenty fifth.
Oh, okay. Why don't you tell us about it?
Okay. I don't know a ton about it right now. All I know is that they are not necessarily matching that entire four thousand. And because we don't necessarily have that total plan structured in place yet, that I'm I'm not sure necessarily how how quickly they would say yes, or even if. that I'm, I'm not sure necessarily how, how quickly they would say yes, or even if they would at this point. But I was just gonna go for it just because I didn't, I didn't realize there was a process to the grants. So that was, that was my mistake, but.
So it's from a DTE, like, community grant program?
Yes, it's actually specifically like a reforestation, actually, Jan, do you remember meeting about that one?
I, I, yeah, that was one of the grants as well as the DNR grants. And, um, I, I have not looked at the specifics of that, but we certainly can help with that. I also have some good connections in that, I, I think what they're looking for is the reforestation plus, uh, preservation. So we have both of those components, so we would have, uh, I think a reasonable chance of, of, uh, being successful.
There's two grants that you're working on right now, when's the DNR grant deadline, do you know?
The DTE deadline is October twenty-fifth, oh, you're not talking to me, sorry.
And that, the DNR, I'm, we have to look at it, I know, uh, Elizabeth Laporte started that, uh, process. And that is actually more of an annual grant too. Um, so, uh, that, that's a little bit more in depth in what you need to provide.
Is it after October twenty-second, Jan?
Uh, yes.
Okay, so why don't we, you just take the time and then we can kind of.
I guess I would rather, I'm considering a motion to move that the PPP director be authorized to apply for all appropriate grants related to the reforestation of West Isle Preserve and to provide status updates to the Board of Trustees. And I'm, I'm gonna make that motion, I don't know if there'll be a second or not, that way we allow her to seek the funds that are relevant to this project and to come back and provide us with information as it comes in, that would be.
So in other words, we're, we're, we would be as a board.
Applying for the grants.
Right, well, it, it, she's preparing to, um, so. What, so the motion would be, uh, conveying the, the board's support for seeking funds to, um, you know, basically, you know, match and sort of leverage the tree fund money to accomplish the reforestation project.
This is getting broader.
That's not in my motion, but it's the intent to allow her to seek the money and then to, 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 to s- seek money. Uh, that, that, uh, she would then provide us an update with on, uh, where she is on getting that, whether we've been granted it or not.
Well, if it, before we, the township got the money, I think, uh, it's clear the board would need to act to accept the grants, so it's not like it's automatic, but she would at least be authorized to submit applications.
Or seek matching funds.
Yeah, I would support that motion.
With the, not the DTE, but the other D, DNR grant, is there a certain amount? A hundred thousand dollars or whatever that they impose on?
Um, I, I would have to look at the paperwork for that, cause Elizabeth was working on it, I was not, um, uh, hang on.
And, and that's why I asked if they, they weren't due before October twenty-second, it's, 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 I'm fully supportive of going after all appropriate grant monies, I'm just saying, if, if, if you haven't had a minute to pull it together and it's totally okay, it's like, but it could just be, you know, some simple motions in the consent agenda to just say like, who we're applying to, for up to how much money, for what purpose, particularly if there's a match. Um, if it has to be used certain ways, obviously the DTE grant sounds pretty straightforward, the DNR one, I'm sure more complex. Um, but we wanna, um, you know, and ideally with something like a DNR grant, something beefy, we would have a semblance of the grant application ready, even though we know it's, none of us ever finish it until like a minute before it's due. But mostly together.
So why don't we go ahead with the DTE, at least try for that, and then later on, when we find out more about the DNR, bring that back. Instead of abroad, just go for it.
Yeah, there, there's a motion on the table, um, do you want to, can you repeat your motion, John?
My motion was that I move that the PPP director be authorized to apply for all appropriate grants related to the reforestation of the West Isle Preserve and to provide status updates to the BOT, uh, on the applications.
Do you want to go with that original motion or do you want to modify it, given the discussion?
I like to go with the original motion and then she'll bring us back, there could be others that she can go out and seek. S- s- so I would like to, to.
Okay, so the motion, that's the motion that's on the table.
Yeah, and the DNR grant, we, we did miss it, so we'll have to wait till next year, but that other resources, so let's go DTE and, and look for the other, there are a couple.
Yeah, and, yeah, I mean, I, I agree, I mean, it's just, I, and this is, has nothing to do with PPP. But I just want to, it, this has happened in other areas where, you know, staff and consultants aren't authorized to apply for grants on behalf of the township, I'm not suggesting that's what's happening here, but that has been a problem before, so, um, I would just say, like, you know, certainly if we want to authorize the township to submit a grant to DTE, you know, that would be great. Um, but, but that's how it is, we don't, we don't, and, and I'm also, um, you know, to, to apply for all appropriate grants, that's also kind of an overly broad authorization, I'd be uncomfortable um, granting to anyone.
Do you want to scale it back a little?
Well, well.
Or we can take the vote.
I, 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 I don't, but I can also read a rule.
Yeah, okay.
So, so, but I, what I'm trying to do is allow her to go out there so we don't miss it, that's why.
Let's go for the DTE one.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, Murphy is doing a great job, she just got here, we're all learning the rules, it's okay.
So I move that the Parks Director, um, be authorized to apply for the DTE grant related to the reforestation of the West Isle Preserve, period.
I'll second that. The move by Riser, support by Hathaway, let's call a roll.
Right, again, and you're not modifying the, the authorizing the director to apply?
No, no, no.
No, no, no.
Replacing his original motion, I, I.
You replaced part of it.
I move that the Parks Director be authorized, if you want me to say the township, through her, I can, but I, I, I did have it as the Parks Director be authorized to apply for all, for the DTE grant related to the reforestation of the West Isle Preserve.
Right, and I think it's, if I could, John.
Okay.
It is not any one staff person that we authorize to apply for month, it would be authorizing the, the township to, to apply for the grant. It's authorizing will to sign whatever it is, but.
I move that the township apply for all, for the DT. For the DT, I got rid of, get rid of the, for the DT grant related to the reforestation of the West Isle Preserve.
Second. Now are we ready to roll call?
Carrie?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Riser?
Yes.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Flintoff, yes. Motion adopted five zero.
I have a quick question, so in the, um, tree fund policy rationale, you reference the tree policy committee. Is, I know we're gonna talk about committees, memberships on committees. Is this an official township committee?
There, there is no, there's no committee in the policy.
I said rationale.
Oh, I'm sorry, Kathy, cause I struck that from the policy, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, the idea would be it's the director is the point person. And she can use the resources that is needed.
I think that may be a trailing reference to something that's no longer there.
Okay, so maybe the rationale is a rough draft?
It's a good resource document, point in time that we did not adopt.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
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 Thank you very much.
Thanks, Jan, thank you, Murphy.
And thank you, Jan. And thank you, Jacqueline and Anna in absentia for the work that went into this originally.
And, and thank you, Murphy, because I was, uh, just ecstatic that you were so excited about it, so let's go, thanks.
Okay. That brings us to item K two, which is the committee, no, I'm sorry, uh, item K one, um, approval of the wage and classification study proposal from Ram, Ramberg, Stover and Associates.
Would you like to, are you gonna keep projecting the word?
Yes.
Are you logged on? Who's logged on?
I'm logged on.
Okay, I've promoted you as a panelist, and if you can just click rejoin as panelist, it'll be awesome. Perfect. Thank you so much. Share with the people at home too.
This is Jeff Romberg.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Nice to meet you in person. It's fairly straightforward and, uh, you have the copy of the proposal, right? So you may, maybe spare with the commercial of who's Romberg, Stover and Associates. We were happy to talk at all about our experiences, background and, and specifically this type of work. But if we turn to project scope, I mean, ultimately what this project is about is making sure the township has the ability to attract and retain staff they need, right? Uh, to perform all the great services that, uh, that you provide to the township, uh, residents. It's an analysis of all the positions in the township, full-time, part-time. Um, it looks both internally in terms of equity, comparing one job versus the other, as well as looking at the marketplace. And it's important to sort of think about this work is not a one-time study. It's gonna say what's the value of these jobs today, our internal relationships, but as well, it's a system. So that you'll be able to manage and administer the compensation program for the staff of the township on an ongoing basis. So you're really investing in not just a one-time study, but as well, the building of a system um, that you'll be able to use, and if you follow, um, will serve you well for a long time. Um, I have lots of municipal clients that have used our systems for decades, so uh, you gotta keep them up to date and we'll talk a little bit about that, but that, that's kind of the important part of the emphasis. Let's make sure we know where we are in the market, make sure from an internal equity standpoint, it's appropriate and, and have a system, so, sure, thanks. Fourth plan. We always start upfront with talking to the leadership of the township, we'll decide who that is, who we should be communicating with to make sure we're all on the same page with objectives, timetable, deliverables. Um, we'll collect information, um, to get us up to speed. We were here four years ago, um, and not a very good time, cause it was right when COVID, the COVID, the original COVID exploded, so it was difficult um, to do that work because of trying to get information and data from other townships to say, but we were here. Um, and so we have all this information, but it's four years old. So we'll, we, we want to get up-to-date versions, rosters of people, job descriptions, organization charts, et cetera, bargaining agreement. Um, we want to develop understanding of all the positions through a review of your existing descriptions, we'll conduct interviews. Um, and we'll actually probably get the employees involved in helping provide some input to their job descriptions with their own suggestions and edits. Um, and ultimately what we're gonna do is in fact, update all your job descriptions, consistent format. Um, and make sure they're including the, the, uh, the areas of content that are important from various matters such as ADA, et cetera. So you'll end up as a product of this work with updated job descriptions. And then we will conduct a market analysis, um, uh, and by, by can, our plan would be and intending is to conduct a custom survey, we will target the municipalities that the township wants us to look at. Um, I think we have a, we have, we developed a list again four years ago and then maybe a starting point to dust off and say to be like that list or not, add, delete, but I think there were sixteen communities, uh, comparable in terms of population, in terms of taxable value, in terms of revenues, expenditures, so, but that's an important part of the process, who are we gonna survey, what's our market, what do we want to compare to? Um, and we need to be mindful of, we have different services here. So do we have the same township to look at for fire or for utilities, what have you? So, um, we'll, we'll work on all of that upfront to make sure we, we've got, we've, we're all comfortable with this is the, the market we want to go after. And then we'll conduct the survey, um, and it's, um, all done electronically and it's, it's a lot of follow-up. This is one of the critical aspects of the work in terms of timing. And how quickly can we get the job done, well, it has a lot to do, how quickly will these municipalities respond, right? These other townships and filling out surveys is not their favorite thing to do, but uh, a number of them are good friends, clients, so we're confident going in, we'll have good participation and sufficient so that we can say that's a good sense of the market. And we, as we speak, we're working with three townships now, and so we have other market data, we might want to augment if we need to from those studies, um, the Michigan Municipal League has a big database, we had direct access to that. Um, in fact, we are now the endorsed provider of this service for all of their clients. And that, and so if you call the league and say, we want to do a pay study, their answer is, we don't do it anymore. But Romberg, Stover does, so, um, the point of that being that, among other things, is we've got, we get all their data. Um, and, and, and any help we might need in terms of resources, so. Ultimately, we put together recommendations, and those recommendations are gonna start with billing a pay schedule and it's gonna have levels and grades, um, and ranges for each one of those grades, and jobs will be placed in the levels that's appropriate based upon the market, internal equity considerations. Um, and then, and we will, in addition to that, we'll, we'll, we'll put together probably at least give you a, a different couple of approaches to salary progression, step plans, how do we move through the ranges? Um, it's, and, and how do employees progress from one year to the next? Um, in fact, we'll put together guidelines for you, uh, this part of the system again, that says, how do we keep this up to date on an ongoing basis? Um, that, that's an important thing to think about, when we build and recommend these ranges, they can't stay static cause the market's not static. And every year you need to look at the market and say, do we need to move our ranges? And, and the likely answer, at least in these times, is you will, because the market's moving. So if we now have a competitive salary range, or the fire chief, we don't want to lose it, right? By not tending to what's happening to the market, um, for, for municipal employees and how much their ranges are moving. We'll put together an implementation plan, so how do we adopt this? How do we go from where we are today to this new system and what would it cost? Um, and there's lots of flexibility in terms of cost, uh, unless you're way out of the market on the low side, um, typically isn't a big expense, but you should, we should have a plan that says, here's how we adopt it, we take, we take employees, put them in the grade on the step that's appropriate, and then what would that cost be relative, the new step versus what they're paid today? All this gets documented, uh, with, with, um, uh, with our findings and recommendations and the plan itself. And there'll be a, a final report and we're prepared to present these, uh, to employees. Um, starting first with the board and then subsequently with the board's approval on to the, to the staff um, to explain the new system and how it worked and the basis for it. And they'll, they'll have a, to the extent we're gonna. And they'll have a, to the extent we're going to talk to them, as we said we would. I mean, they'll have a good sense of what this project's all about and get a better sense of us. And you know, one thing we've learned, they've been doing this a while, a long time, is that the process is as important as the outcome. And so how employees feel about it. And, and so having some interaction with the consultants and understanding what's going to happen and the different steps that are taking place. You know, there's, there's, there's no secrets here. Things aren't done in some magical black boxes and outcome answers. It's all straightforward, above board and that's the way it should be. So that's an overview of work plan. We've got a timeframe at 10 to 12 weeks. I think we can do it. The big key is two key, well, one is the survey, right? We got to get the data back. We got to let, have them have time to, to complete it, the different municipalities. And also will be important is we want employees helping input in these job descriptions. So we can't come in and disrupt everything, but they actually have jobs, right? Things to do, but, but hopefully they'll, they'll have the time and will be committed to, to make that important contribution. We have a fees estimate, we're prepared to commit to the top number if there's no change in scope. And that was again, it's in our proposal. And then we have a little chart that sort of outlines how we sort of see things piecing together. Those different activities that we just quickly touched on and sort of our sense of timeframe with the biggest ones being getting the job descriptions done and the market analysis. So that's real quick. And would be more than happy to respond. Any questions, concerns, thoughts?
Yeah, thank you so much for the presentation. Thank you Aurora for working together on this. I appreciated the work you did for us back in 2019 into 2020. I think the scope we asked you to do was a little different than what we're asking for today. And I'm, I'm excited about the scope before us tonight. I, I'm glad that we have Aurora in this position to be working with you because I think that she's really going to help us take what you produce and, and make it more actionable for us. The scope is much bigger in this one before we did a salary survey. But this, as I'm understanding it, would be new job descriptions as well as a classification and compensation grid. And, and so I, I want to describe what I think that means. And you tell me if, if, if we agree that we would then have, you know, defined job titles, classification, compensation range, perhaps with steps for each with job descriptions that tie to each of those. Is that right?
Correct.
And so that's what the compensation classification plan is. And then what does, what, when you say provide a written final report? What does that look like?
Well, all, all of our work will ultimately come to you. Actually, it'll be more than just a hard copy. We will, it will in fact be, you know, it'll all be electronic. So here's all the data and here's all the comparative analysis. And here's the salary structure, again, all electronically in spreadsheets. And here's how you can maintain that over time and
The tools.
There's just tools, it'll make it easy. So if you want to update your pay ranges next year by 2%, pick a number. You hit a button on a spreadsheet and there's your answer. So the tools will be there.
Two other questions. The positions listed are a little incomplete and I don't know if that's something we can talk about later? Or is that something that's been negotiated?
Could talk about it because when it was put in, that's what was the scope of it. I added two positions, one of them being a new one that was fairly newly created. And then that was the scope that we had decided on. So if there was something outside of that, that we do need to talk about.
Okay, so, so a couple. One would be the, the finance assistant. I know we have that listed as finance assistant slash utilities, which is kind of the current assignment, but I'd like to kind of understand finance assistant more broadly. You know, as we are building towards having multiple people, you know, do E functions like utilities, payroll, other things. And I also, I see the office coordinator on here. And then it says slash manager. What I don't see on here is manager or administrator. If we want.
So are you talking about the township manager?
Yeah.
Yes, that one has been included af- after this. We included the township manager and we included IT specialist. Those were the two that were added after.
Oh, thank you. I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
No, that's okay.
The additions were reflected.
Right.
And then I see that you have the deputy clerk and deputy treasurer, two appointed positions. If we're including those two, should we not include the elected positions as well? The clerk, treasurer, supervisor, trustee. Now, we have a compensation commission. But this information would be nothing but helpful. I mean, it's not, it's not hard to find. But, but things like, you know, benefits packages or things like that.
So man, we, we can include the elected officials if you want. I mean, obviously weren't, they weren't in the request for proposal. So this, this just mirrors what your RFP had said. So, which didn't include them, but that's, that's for you to decide. We're happy to do it.
I, I don't know. It seems like if we're doing the two appointed positions, why not have more information in the survey?
More information, the better.
And then the, the third point is in the who you kind of look, look at. This is one thing I noticed about our work before. And you know, Siyo is such an incredibly rich township for being a general law township. You know, 18,000 people with the taxable value we have. And I appreciate that you might use those two to identify other jurisdictions. But I know when I've tried to compare Siyo Township to other jurisdictions for different reasons, it can be hard. I'm wondering if you might consider that our employees, you know, have to be in a reasonable distance to commute. And so the cost of living within that, like, you know, radius, I don't know what it is, 60 miles. How would you consider that in your selection of comparables?
I'm not sure I follow.
So we need to make sure that people can afford
Right.
to live close enough to work here.
Right.
And so just choosing, you know, another jurisdiction by taxable value or population, you may not know. Like there are very few counties like Washtenaw County, right? Like we've got, it's high cost, highly educated, a lot of workforce and expensive.
So Jeff and I had a brief conversation earlier this afternoon about the comparables and how with some of these positions, probably most of them nearby communities would probably be comparables that we should use also. So saying exactly what you're saying. So maybe, maybe like Celine, things like that, that that might be because of the commute, it being a shorter commute. Here, people, employees do tend to look at near not driving too far sometimes for a job. So that was one of the things that we briefly talked about to just kind of like keep, keep that in mind.
It, you know, we did a project for Traverse City. They have the same problem.
Yeah, they do.
We, we, we did the exact study for Traverse City. And, and nobody can live there because it costs too much, but they had to work there. So, and yet you wanted to look at comparable communities in terms of size. It's particularly important for management positions, I think, that this, this size factor becomes more important. But anyway, so it was, there was an intentional thought and premium put on their pay levels to try to make some dent. And that's probably all in the end you could do. But so the market for the comparables in, in Traverse City, in fact, were certain numbers, but we need to pay more because of our cost of living challenge and housing. It's just housing too expensive, people can't live there. And so that's a little overs, but so anyway, that's what they did. So we should give that some thought here too. We can think about, this is the market, but we've got this challenge. So, you know, you don't have to follow the market, you just need to know what it is. And then you can decide what's right for, you know, for Siyo. So I think we can, I mean, I don't know if that's where you're heading or not, or considering.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think that might be, be one approach. I just want to make sure that when we're selecting comparables, we're selecting, you know, places, we're, we're, we're considering the fact that what I saw last time was we were, you know, comparing to a lot of places that were fairly isolated, not as high cost to live. And so the comparables, some of them were, I think, lower than what would be realistic for Siyo. So when we talk about, it's really how you define the market.
Absolutely. Great point. And so we will make sure, because it's obviously too important, that this is a list of comparables that everyone's weighed in on. From the board's perspective, as well as what, you know, you're.
And I'm, I'm really interested, I'm not, you know, I'm really interested in like what data points you're using to select them.
Oh, sure.
Okay.
Will do.
Other questions? This is great. I'm glad that this is moving forward. Thank you Aurora for jeopardizing this process. Did you want to add anything further before?
No, no, I don't have anything further to ask.
We're prepared to make the model motion to approve the proposal from Ramberg, Stover and Associates to conduct a wage and classification study, authorize the supervisor and clerk to sign the engagement letter subject to township attorney review. Move by Rizer. Support by Noel.
If I could just ask a question. It looks like it's already approved by the township attorney, correct?
Reviewed? Is it already reviewed?
Did I say that it was on the? So yeah, the, the item says two things. It says reviewed and approved as deformed by township attorney. And then the motion that John just made says subject to township attorney review. If I, if it says on the agenda that I, or in the plan that I approved, that's what I could.
So we could omit the, as approved by attorney. Not that it hurts. Okay. For this, I think, since there's a fiscal impact, we need to have a roll call vote.
Harry?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Rizer?
Yes.
Pathway?
Yes.
Flintoff? Yes. Motion adopted five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dude, I asked if you could get another copy of the engagement letter that has a place for both the clerk and the supervisor.
I, I noticed that in the comment. I will do that.
Okay, thank you.
Better make a note.
Thanks very much for all your work.
Okay, that brings us to item K2, which is to create a committee to define manager position. Kristin, you prepared this one. Do you want to introduce this?
I did. With the help of Kathleen, I prepared it. And it was discussed at the ad hoc committee meeting that they wanted to create this committee to start looking at job description, salary range and for the township manager.
Great. And I, the model motion, I, I know you put some work into making it very specific advice from the township attorney.
Yes.
Is someone prepared to make the model motion? Want to read it or you want to read it?
Oh, you want to read it?
Either way, it doesn't matter.
To approve the formation of an ad hoc committee to define, recruit and hire a manager is outlined in the above charge. The committee members will consist of John Rizer, Kathy Noel, Jessica Flintoff, Ryan Yebo, Kathleen Brand, Jillian Carey and Judy Monk. These members are incumbents and new officers expected to take office on November 20th, 2024, based on the results of the August 6th, 2024 primary election. And further to task Christie Aiken, office coordinator, with assembling the committee. Staff to, to the committee will include Christie Aiken and Aurora Northrup. Looking at her to make sure she knows she's included here. The committee meetings will be conducted as public meetings as defined by the Open Meetings Act.
Is there a second? Support. Support by Rizer. Unless there's further discussion, please call the roll.
Harry?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Rizer?
Yes.
Pathway?
Yes.
Flintoff? Yes. Motion adopted five zero.
Okay, that brings us to the items that were moved from the consent agenda. First is H5, this is approval of new floor tile for Siyo Township Hall public restrooms. And I believe there was a need to correct or adjust the model motion.
Yeah. So in, in some discussion, I think H5 and H6 may be better to be suited to be one actionable item. To give a brief overview, this was one of the main priorities that Joyce had regarding the township upgrades that she told me that she'd like done was specifically for the women's bathroom, this public hallway to be redone as a tile around the toilets. Are, have been removed for quite some time, I was told. And then again, I looked at the rest of the public bathrooms and seeing the condition that they were in. Not extremely horrible, but the flooring is dated, the wallpaper is dated and the bathroom stalls were purple. So, um, so in talking with her, I decided that we should, you know, just overhaul the bathrooms completely and, and go with that. The first thing that I looked into was a new flooring tile. I did, we were able to get two quotes. It was really hard to get three. The two man's lumber and home came up with 17,260 to do the new flooring tile in all four public bathrooms. So the two public bathwa- public hallway bathrooms here and then the two public lobby bathrooms. Additionally, the two countertop sinks and sinks and faucets in these two public bathrooms right here in this hallway to be replaced. The other two public bathrooms do not have countertops and seem to be just fine. So I, I thought it was best to freshen those up as well, see how we're doing the floor, the match. We also, I, I did get that quote from Man's Lumber. That price is 6,494 and 22 cents. There was discussion about if the new countertops and sinks were going to be ADA compliant. I did reach out to Man's Lumber and ask specifically if these would be. They did respond that looking at the new ADA compliance rules, that he believed that everything matched ADA compliance. And then I did leave some, some documents that he gave us for me to review to specify what exactly those ADA compliance were that he was looking at, to make the, the judgment call on if he was complying. And he believed that, that these new countertops were.
Is it the same as what I emailed you?
I think, yeah, I think it was just more condensed in there.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure he sent, there's no date on what he sent us. I just wanted to make sure it was the current recommendations.
I didn't vet that. But yeah, this is what he sent me like two days ago. Additionally, we're talking to Jillian. We thought perhaps maybe it would be a good idea to get rid of the faucets that you have to touch to move to hot and cold. And maybe we would rather do more of a touch-free or touchless faucet. And so really the one, if we combine the one agenda item, I thought with talking to Jillian, it would be better to just do not to exceed amount for this agenda motion that was a little bit higher than what was planned. Just in case we wanted, not that we have to, but just in case we thought it was best to go with faucets that we, that you don't have to touch. So it's just a little bit more friendlier. Keep it in mind, the various sicknesses that you can get from touching the faucets and stuff, yes. So the cost for just the bathrooms outside of the painting that I'll discuss in a second is $23,754 and 22 cents. If we were to change the faucets, I don't think it's going to be a huge additional cost. I don't know what it would be. So I would say not to exceed 25,000 would be where we need to be. And then I'll definitely get that information to Christie and Jillian and let them know what it is before we, we agree to that change. So for this one, it would be to approve Man's Lumber and Home and the amount not to exceed 25,000 for installation of new Corian countertops. And the amount not to exceed twenty-five thousand for installation of new Corian countertops, new seats, faucets and flooring.
Is someone prepared to make that version?
Questions? Um, so we took our total budget for this project of all four bathrooms was twenty-five thousand dollars. So, talk to me about the painting.
Yep, so. Correct. So the painting, um, I didn't think of it as bringing it to the agenda item as. It's under the five thousand dollar threshold, but then with talking with you, Jessica, it is all one project in the grand scheme of things. The painting, um, we did actually get three quotes. Um, let me just reference the name. Five star painting. Um, was the one that came with the low bid for three thousand nine hundred sixty-nine dollars and forty-two cents. The total project, um, if we were to stick with the same faucets is twenty-seven thousand seven hundred twenty-three dollars and sixty-four cents. So we'd be. Yeah, a little over, um, two thousand dollars, two thousand seven hundred twenty-three dollars over budget, um, for what we originally estimated.
I just want to clarify for the board too. This is just more for the record, um, the board who care, but the, this is budgeted in one oh one, two six five nine seven two. That's different than what's on our.
What's that fund?
That is the capital outlay fund.
Capital outlay. So, so these are, these improvements like the HVAC or generator. Um, largely borne by the general fund, though cost allocated out, um, for the other departments that use township halls. A question about the touchless ones. I like not touching dirty things too, except I always wonder. What is the maintenance? Um, it's so frustrating when they stop working. So what's your advice?
Um, I would think that I would need to talk more about the professional, um, like a plumber. Um, have a few that I could talk to to get their opinion on it. The only thing that I can think of when I use a touchless one, and I, I mean, it's nice not to have to touch it, is oftentimes that happens. Or the water shuts off too quickly. You're constantly trying to get your hands in there to get the kick back on. But other than that, I mean, I understand, uh, you know, it, it goes a long way of, um, trying not to get sick.
There should be a ways to adjust that to make it longer.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Sure.
Yeah, I mean, it will conserve on water too. So that's nice.
I didn't look into ADA materials. Is touchless like more ADA compliant?
I would assume so.
I could see it going both ways.
I mean, instead of having to reach a little bit further and touch the faucets or on top of the faucet, they're just putting their hands a little bit closer to them. Um, to be under. And then another thing that we were going to change, if this was gotten approved. Is that the soap dispensers are up on the wall closer to the mirror. And I do believe, um, if somebody is in a wheelchair, it's probably not accessible to them. So we would, we would, uh, get some new soap dispensers, relocate them. And then have that taken care of, that painting and all that taken care of.
So Brandon, in the scope that says that your team would be responsible for removing the toilets and the partitions.
No, no. No.
He said emphatically.
No, I, I made sure that we are not involved in this whatsoever.
So.
The one quote did say it.
So the top, maybe I'm misunderstanding. So it's the tile company that says customer to remove toilets and partitions.
Yeah. Man's lumber is in the quote that we are not to do that. They are going to remove.
Oh, they're.
They're going to do all that work.
Okay, there was a losing quote that you guys.
We're, we're reusing the stalls, the metal partitions.
Correct. They're just getting repainted. To whatever color, uh, a small little group of people that I've been talking about, what color for the flooring tile and countertops. Um, so that, that color is to be determined, but I'm, I'm guessing some kind of like light tan color. Um, to go more with the new flooring and countertop. I'm just not sure yet.
And Brandon, the, um, when Kevin was here for building, he did a great job of painting what became Aurora's office. Howard painted this whole building. We have, uh, you know, have had people on, on your team in the past who can paint. Why, why can't we paint it ourselves?
Um. I would, I would say that I might have a difference of opinion on the, the paint quality that was done. Um, in Aurora's office, um, just inspecting it more thoroughly myself, um, although he was. Kind of rushed to, to get it done. Um, however, we, yeah, we do have other work. We don't have a building maintenance person currently under staff.
We will soon.
Yes, um, and given that, um, again, this is something. That is going to have to be done the very last opinion aspect of it. And I'm thinking that all this stuff won't be in until. Uh, either it has to be done before the election period or after. I'm thinking it's going to be, most of this will be done after the election period. So that will give us more time and I don't have to commit to the painting company, um, until later on. I don't have to call him up and say you're approved yet. Um, I can just hold on to this information until. You know, maybe, maybe we do get that new person in and.
Because painting is going to be one of the responsibilities.
Definitely.
Our building maintenance person, right Aurora?
Definitely.
Previously, yeah.
Yes.
So what maintenance Addison up to including the painting would give you the flexibility to do that?
Yeah, I would think that the.
Needed, but yet your intent is to have the new maintenance person on staff and doing this work.
Absolutely. If we have the person or, uh, we're willing to wait if some of the other work is already done. Again, the painting is going to be the very last thing. Um, if we want to wait until we get a painting person or a painting person, uh, building staff member. Uh, that, that has the time to do it. Absolutely. We can just forego. Uh, I, I just don't have to call the painting company and will more than happy to have the staff do it. Um, this was, yeah, you know, me thinking right now, we don't have the staff. We weren't necessarily a hundred percent sure on the complete direction that the new building maintenance person would be. If it was going to be full time, part time. In either way, that was just a quick conversation. It hasn't progressed. But, uh, either way, even if it was part time, we could get the work done. Um, it was just to have it so that the whole building or the whole bathrooms, we're going to. Um, have everything we needed in order to be completed the right way, um, and painting absolutely could be substituted by those staffing teams. Correct.
Yeah, and I would, and maybe we could, um, structure the motion that way with a contingency. Because I'll, I'll just state that it's always, it's almost always more efficient to have our in-house staff through to work. That's why we hired.
Definitely be cheaper.
And I know, you know, we're contracting out for cleaning services right now. I just don't want to, you know, make that a permanent situation.
That's no problem.
So what would the figure be to include it as a contingency again? And you said it was.
Well, I thought it would be better to do two motions, uh, that the, the, the man's lumber work would be one motion. And that would be not to exceed the, to approve man's lumber and home and the amount not to exceed twenty-five thousand for the installation of new Corian countertops. New sinks, faucets and flooring. Um, and again, if we don't change anything, we're at twenty-three thousand seven fifty-four and twenty-two cents. So, uh.
Could you state that proposed motion again, please?
Yes, to approve man's lumber and home and the amount not to exceed twenty-five thousand. For the installation of new Corian countertops, new sinks, faucets and flooring.
And I would, um, faucets and flooring. Um. And if we could just say, um. In compliance with ADA standards.
Yeah, absolutely.
The fund, from the budgeted funds in one oh one, two six five, nine seven two. So that would be a hundred percent of the budgeted funds for this.
Someone prepared to make that model motion?
And. And so Brandon, that would take care of what you're currently proposing in H five and H six.
Correct.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Flintoff, support by, support. Harry, please call the roll.
Harry?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Riser?
Yes.
Pathway?
Yes.
Flintoff? Yes, motion adopted five zero.
Second motion is to have the cover the contingency for painting.
Correct. I'm trying to figure out the wording in my head on that.
So this isn't even budgeted. You know, we would have to, you know, I mean, this is beyond the project budget. I mean, we can do it.
Definitely, yep.
Um.
Want to bring it back as a consent item when you have time to put it together?
I mean, comfortably do we need the?
So again, I, I don't anticipate the painting to be done until late November, early December.
Yeah.
So I, I didn't have it originally to be brought to the board. As I said, it was something that. Um, you know, I was going to talk with Christie about, and then Christie would talk to who she needs to talk about it.
Bring it back to the consent item when you got it together.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and just as a clarification, and Brandon, you're doing a great, great job. But as a clarification for everybody, officers and staff alike. There's, you know, no funds should be authorized before they're appropriated, right? So they've got to be appropriated first. And then that may be authorized as a must. How they're authorized is via our procurement policy. That sets forth that five thousand dollar amount. So just because it's below five thousand dollars, doesn't mean it doesn't have to be appropriated.
I totally agree. And that's why originally I thought we were budgeting this out of the building township.
Exactly.
Which was a fifty thousand dollar budget. So that's the reason why I thought we were okay.
Totally cool.
Yep.
Thank you, Brandon.
Okay, that brings us to item H seven. This is the Land Preservation Commission appointment of David Crockett. And it's, um, Jillian, you, we got asked to pull this from the consent agenda. Could you?
Yeah, um. So in our email, um. We kept getting these emails from the gov access and every time I open them, I think there's three different ones from David Crockett. I don't know if it was a, a glitch or if he was kept applying because. So I called him and I said, has anybody contacted you from the township? And he said, no. And I said, okay, um, because I was trying to clarify why there were so many, um, uh, applications from him. But I read through his resume and spoke with him and he is. I know he applied for the LPC at first, but then later on the LPC and the PPP. But when I spoke with him, he is better suited for the PPP. And the reason why is because he's an outdoors person. He likes to be outdoors. He likes the hands on. He has a prescribed, a burn, um, certification. He has other certifications that are, that would be very helpful for the PPP. Um, he is, um. Yeah, he's a really nice person. He has only been here for about two years and he has been, um. Volunteering at Brokaw, Brokaw, which it's in Ann Arbor.
It's actually.
Well, it's actually in.
SIO, but it's owned by Ann Arbor. There's something different about it.
There's a story behind it, but yeah, judge basically said he was giving that land to Ann Arbor to take care of. Because at that time, SIO Township did not have any capacity for overseeing it. And so that's how that happened.
Okay. Well, he's really enjoying it and he ran into Lisa Pappas there. I don't know if, if she, what the conversation was. So they did, I know that, and Liz Wiseman also recommended for him to be on the LPC. However, um, I think it's best that he would only be on one committee and the PPP would be the, the best spot for him. We don't have an opening right now, but we do have two, well, we did have two openings or, um, terms, term limits coming up. And one was Rita, so we approved her, um. Renewal. And the other, I believe, is Patrick McLaughlin. And that, that's for December thirteenth. So I don't know if we've heard from Patrick, but I think that we should.
Not yet. I did learn from Murphy today because I talked with her a little bit. I said, hey, you know, talk to me about these appointments because I noticed. You know, she'd used the language of nominating and stuff. And she said, she was just being super proactive. Reached out to everybody on parks who had terms coming up because she was just trying to keep business going, which I appreciate. And she said she had reached out to Rita and also Patrick. And she was still trying to determine and Patrick was interested in continuing.
And at Lhasa, he had mentioned that he, if he was, if anybody wanted to. Yeah, like he's not, he didn't seem interested in staying on Lhasa, but if he had to, so I wasn't sure if it was the same thing. But anyway, that's why I pulled this. He, he does want to be called David or Dave, not Davy Crockett, even though he related to Davy Crockett.
Oh, he is?
Yeah, he's a, a great nephew or great, great nephew. So I thought that was really cool. And I'm like, well. Um, in, in the LPC, he would do okay there. It's just that when on the LPC, you don't visit. Properties except maybe a little bit. You're not out there.
Initial site.
But it's just initial. Right.
Characteristics of it.
But with the PPP, they're actually out there, um. Visiting, yeah, field trips. At least that's what I have seen in the past.
Well, both, both of the, both of the committees do site visits for different reasons. LPC is to evaluate and make recommendations and.
Yeah, I understand that, but the PPP, I know that they meet quite often during the, um, warmer months. At different parks or preserves or whatever, because at least that was under Anna. I don't know if Murphy plans on doing that again, but.
Well, one, one option would be to appoint, um, Dave, David or Dave Crockett to. The LPC and keep in mind that there may be an opening on Parks, Preserves and Pathways. Because in the past, we were trying to have connections between those two committees in particular because of their interactions.
Like Liz Wiseman.
Like Liz Wiseman or somebody like that.
Yeah, but we, we really need to have seats open so that we're not having one person on two or three or four committees.
Yeah, and I think, I think there's, you know, there's, there's two different ways to make like the connections between the committees. And I think that model, you know, works when you don't have staff. But I think more and more as we've hired staff, like they need to be the ones kind of connecting. And we don't need to resolve this now.
And I did bring this, bring David up to Murphy at one point. And she thought it was a casting conversation and she thought that with his background, he would be really helpful with the PPP.
So what, what did he say when you talked with him about?
He prefers that to be on the parks.
Oh, well, okay, fine.
Yeah. So he just applied to LPC because there was an opening at the time.
Oh, okay. So then Will, I want to clarify something we received from Liz and Lisa. Cause Liz Wiseman and Lisa Pappas had said, you know. I understand you're receiving an application soon from David Crockett. We really want him on the LPC. I've gotten, I guess it was an impression.
Right.
Now I made an assumption that was clearly wrong, that they had like all talked and stuff.
He, he said that he ran into Lisa at Brokaw and that was the conversation. Then it somehow went to Liz. This is, and I just spoke with him last week.
And both of them have advocated to have him appointed to the LPC. And, um, I can speak to a little bit about the repeated applications. He first submitted an application through the website. And just included the cover letter. And because in the past, the board has wanted to have resumes for people, especially new applicants who, who we are not a known quantity. Um, I encouraged him to submit a resume. So that sent, he sent his application again with a resume. So that's at least one of the repetitions that you saw was because of that.
Okay, so you had a conversation with him or it was email exchange?
Oh, okay. I wrote to him and I said, thank you, um, you know, please, if you could submit a resume, that would be great. We did. So I didn't talk with him on the phone, but I did communicate with him via email. And I was under the impression that Liz Wiseman and possibly Lisa Pappas had also talked with him. But I, I didn't, I don't know. John, do you have more intel about?
No, I, I thought, right, right in the packet, I looked at his letter. I looked at his resume. I thought it was. I just assumed that he wanted to be on the body that he applied for.
I didn't too. But if he preferred, if he preferred to be on the Parks, Preserves and Pathways Committee, um, I, it seems like there may be an opening on that committee coming up.
And regardless of what we do, I just want to clarify one thing. The model motion here is, is fine. I just want to note, um, the vacancy in the LPC is created by Will Weber, uh, stepping down. Will Weber had held the seat of resident and botanist zoologist, which is required by our ordinance. Um, Will has advised that Daryl Burkhart is also a botanist zoologist. So.
Appointed her to the LPC.
Right. And so I'm just for the record, putting her in the botanist zoologist seat. Okay.
I think we're supposed to, I, I'm not, I don't have it in front of me, but isn't it saying you have to have at least one?
Yeah, the.
So we have two. We have two, now we have one again.
The open space ordinance is on the list of ordinances to update.
Okay. Well, in any case, um, it seems. Okay, well, in any case, um it seems like we're not ready to take action on this this evening. Um so um perhaps we should just let this go until we.
So Jill, do you wanna reach back out?
Yeah, I told him I would after.
Yeah, yeah, and talk to Liz and Lisa too, and and just kind of see what the will of the group is.
Or the groups.
And then, yeah.
Yeah. Are we following our township agreed upon plan? We have openings on these committees.
Wasn't.
No, not, no, we're not as closely as we should be. And, and with these that were coming open, like in December. I was hanging back a little bit, thinking that likely the new board would make appointments. Um so I hadn't been proactively doing the sixty days. I know we put it in the newsletter and things, but.
Well, the policy puts a lot of the burden on the clerk for um notifying people, both people who are on committees. And um those who might like to serve on committees. And so um, you know, that part of the policy, if people wanna talk about that. Um that's something to talk about with Jessica. I was just trying to, you know, act on the proposals that were coming to me from the committees. And um using the applicants that were coming forward.
Yeah, so like the sixty days ahead of time for the December ones. Um, that's uh.
Here we go.
Yeah, so that would be about right now. So that's why these, like December fourteenth, you know, expirations, John. With the new board coming in, I thought it was logical that they would probably do the recruiting. So I was uh holding back a little bit on that.
And when is the newsletter be in mailboxes?
Tenth.
Of November?
Of October.
Oh.
It's gonna arrive any day now.
Okay, I guess. This week.
Hmm.
Good, because it is, as you said, it's in there. Which is perfect time. Okay, I'll let um David, I'll call him tomorrow and then I'll reach out um to Lisa and Liz.
Yeah, but I just, I mean, David seems like a, a great candidate and I'm glad he's interested in serving in some capacity.
Yeah, absolutely.
And just a word about the other appointment that goes on the consent agenda. Um there was a lot of advocacy, uh urgency to uh that from. Um Murphy, she has come to rely on Rita as uh kind of a. Uh Rita's one of the co-chairs of Parks, Preserves and Pathways Committee, and she relies a lot on both Rita and Roy. And when um Rita indicated that she wanted to continue, Murphy wanted to um move that forward and make sure that Rita continued. Um to be there to work as a collaborator with her.
And I think we'll keep working with Murphy and all of our staff on kind of existing policies related to grants and committee appointments. And things as they learn the ropes. I, I will say, and I've, I've shared this with, with Murphy too. Is, and this dynamic existed before Murphy, is especially for parks and um LPC. You know, I really want to be relying, able to rely on our staff people to carry these issues forward. And that consultants or advisory committees are advisory um to the staff and to the board. And, and I mean, that's why we've created these positions, and so I think we need to really support our staff. And really understanding that, you know, they work for the township. They don't work for advisory committees. I went to the BAT program. I think Rita's a great resource. I think she brings a lot of knowledge. But it needs to be um advice to the staff that the staff can take or leave. The staff do not report to the advisory committees, and I think that dynamic, um we need to be conscious of, of keeping that broken up.
Okay, let's move on then to public comment. Um this is the time for members of the public to speak for up to three minutes on any matter under the purview of the Board of Trustees. Um trustee Riser, will you serve as our public speaker again, please? We'll start with those who are present in the hall. If you would like to speak during public comment, please come forward.
Rob Pattinson, Sio Township. This board often is like watching a herd of cats driving a train on the way to a train wreck. Uh tonight, I am extremely optimistic in the future of Sio Township. Brandon, Murphy, Chris, Aurora and Christie all demonstrate the best qualities of what we want. And people who are serving Sio Township residents. Um all brought a lot of professionalism and capability tonight, and I'm really impressed and optimistic about that future. Um, the Sio Township Sustainability Fair was this weekend. And I really commend Jan and the ESTF for putting that on. That was a fantastic program. I was there for an hour and a half later in the afternoon, and there was a lot of people there, a lot of conversations going on. It was very well done. Supervisor Hathaway, uh at the end of the meeting, or after the meeting was over last time, you approached me in the parking lot. I asked some questions of trustee Brazil, who was absent, and you approached me in the parking lot and offered some answers. And also you sent me the redacted forensic report, and I asked you a bunch of questions about that. And you wrote back that you would rather discuss that in person rather than respond in writing. I accept your invitation to discuss it. Uh it'll probably have to be next week, but you and I need to work out a time where we can discuss that. Forensic report and my questions about it. And that's everything. Thank you.
Is there anyone else present who would like to speak during public comment?
To thank you for postponing the action on the, on the barn. Um I'm really excited about its potential for. Um for Sio and for our residents, so thank you.
I'm just psyched. Do you have ideas?
Is there anyone else present who would like to speak during public comment? If not, let's turn to those who are participating in public. Oh, I'm sorry.
I just quickly share with you, um my husband is not David Klubek, Renee Klubek, my husband David Klubek on the road advisory committee. Is not here this evening because he's home receiving birthday wishes from our grandchildren. But I just wanted, he asked me to at least share with all of you and be quicker this way. Um he's attended his first meeting with the advisory committee. He's attended two committee meetings at Washtenaw County Roads. And he also has a meeting set up with Adam Lape uh one to one. Um he just wanted everyone to know that he takes this position, wants to spend so much talk about the committees. He takes it very seriously. Um and he's very excited to do the best for Sio Township, so feel free, anybody, to reach out to him. Even if he's not here in the evening, he's on top of things and he'll be getting back to the committee here after he meets with Adam. So that was my notice, just almost forgot. Thank you.
And happy birthday.
Thank you. Okay, last call. All right, uh let's turn to those who are participating remotely.
Sure. Call his iPhone, hello.
Yeah, good evening. I, I first wanna thank Christie Aiken, because when I came in and I needed to. Ask some information, she greeted me as she always did in her other position and. Um was uh very helpful. And uh secondly, I wanna thank Brandon. And uh people need to be aware, I try to explain to people about the, you know, our water rates were really jacked up and. You know, to the families and people that I know. And the, these inspections of the um sewer lines for, are extremely important. We gotta look back to when Governor Schneider and the whole Flint thing and Legionnaires. And that's why Eagle came up with those rules. Eagle doesn't always have the rules that I would like them to have, but um. Uh so even though it looks like, I'm very happy with them. And um. It makes me, and I wasn't unhappy with other people, but I think we needed a team to really get to this water sewer. Especially as all the building goes on. And um then having watched the planning commission, the whole church. Um, it's gonna come to the board for you all to look at with the contamination. I'm not a, any scientist on that. They're gonna, uh John Riser, trustee. Suggested they make sure they have their people with them when they come. Because um, you know, I, like I said, I understand developers have to pay a lot to develop and. Um but when the planning commission uh does ask something of them, I'm thinking of the industrial site. And uh sometimes I, I thought with the discussion, I watched it, I had to leave after my comment about the air quality. But somebody said something about manure, that's manure smell and a, and um. What, you know, volatile organic chemicals are a big difference. And I'm so glad to see that, you know, we're rising above some of that. And we're gonna look after the safety and the well-being of the people um in Sio. And I, I really appreciate that. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you, Paula. Any other interested public, please raise your hand.
Your motion to adjourn.
Promoted.
By Riser. Support by Noel. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, all right.
Well, that was a correct way to end it.
All right, we're turned to ten oh two.
Thanks, everybody.